Board here, I would like to open the floor for any nominations.
I nominate Eric.
Okay, we have a nominee for Eric.
I'll suck.
Okay, the second from Eric. Any discussion? I'd like to call for a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion is passed, unanimous vote, congratulations Eric, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, for everyone. Alright, uh, so we'll move on and open up a nomination for Vice Chairman, are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Meredith.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Alright, hearing done, all those in favor for Meredith as Vice Chair, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, and Board, Board Clerk, are there any nominations for Board Clerk?
Matt or Mary interested in that?
I think Matt is still interested. Speak for him, but I don't.
I'm on, I mean, if you guys, if no one wants it, I'll take it again.
I'll nominate Matt.
Alright. Are there any nominations for Board Clerk? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, congratulations Meredith and Matt.
Congratulations Eric.
Okay, um, alright, next on, remaining Board members, we have Amanda, Sue, Mary, and George. Uh, GRC Voting Members, um, so, um, would like to be a voting member of the GRCSU, so, um, don't know if George is still interested in it, cuz he was on it last year, but, I think, um, and I haven't heard anything, so, is, if there's anyone else who's interested in?
Amanda's interested.
What's that?
I think Amanda's interested.
If they have an open spot, I'll take it, but I don't wanna step in front of anybody else, but, would be interesting.
Okay.
Hey Eric, I'm not sure, um, I, I don't see George or Sue, I wasn't sure if I couldn't see him around, or, or they just weren't, um, with you guys there, okay, thanks.
Correct, they're not here, uh, I, I believe Sue's gotta be late, and I haven't heard from George, so I hope everything's okay. Uh, but, uh, yeah, and so, uh, you know, obviously, I, I like to continue on the GRCSU Board, um, and, uh, so, well, um, if there's no objection, um, make a motion for myself, Meredith, and Amanda to be our GRCSU Representatives. Any further discussion? What's that?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, uh, any, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Um, alright, we can move right along here, set make regular meeting schedule, we're currently meeting the second Wednesday of the month. Is everyone, uh, okay with our current meeting schedule?
Works for me.
And we'll, we'll take action on all these, so, we can, we can just breeze right on through these, if, if someone just wants to make a motion, then, and, uh,
I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion by Mary to set our regular meeting schedule for the second Wednesday of the month. Uh, all those in favor, or any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries unanimously.
Nevermind.
Uh, set date of annual Board Retreat, um, typically, we usually, we usually pick another date to do this, instead of trying to figure it out during reorganization. So, I, I would, I would say, we could, we could table this to our next month's meeting, and then we can discuss, um, Board Retreat as a, an agenda item. So, um, is anyone, um, oppose that, or would you like to set our retreat schedule now, our retreat date now?
I'm good with a TBD.
Okay. Alright, that's fine, we will, we will table this, so we don't need to really take any action on table. Alright, annual meeting dates for February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-six, um, affirm use of robust rules for small boards, that should be in our materials, um, if, uh, if, is there any discussion on rubber tools for small boards, um?
I'll make a motion to affirm the use of rubber tools.
Motion by Amanda. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries unanimously. Uh,
But apparently, you don't have to sign them.
No, I, I don't think so, you know.
But I mean, even on our part, it's because we're adopting that.
I know, and, and, I think in the past, um, I recall that we would just adopt them, and, um, we never, I don't think we ever signed them, but, even if you don't, I mean,
Yeah.
But, um, and then, uh, um, I don't know, uh, Chris, did you wanna talk about the, the B three? Um, this is, this is new.
Right, so the V S B A, the new Board Member Orientation Packet, it asks that, uh, as we onboard new Board Members, that we uh, review our conflict of interest policy and have them sign off, and so, what the V S B A suggested to us was also just maybe good practice to have all Board Members understand conflict of interest, and just what that, you know, if there is a situation which they have to recuse themselves from a discussion or a vote, what that, uh, what that entails, and so, that's why that's in there, is just to, you know, to refer a policy of in place that we understand the conflict of interest.
Alright, so we have a motion on the table to, uh, accept the V S B A Code of Ethics, uh, any discussion on this? Alright, all those in favor, uh, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, and then, review and adopt our Board Operating Protocols, that is also in, uh, um, the drive, um, is there, has everyone reviewed these, I, I know, um, when we, when we did this work a couple of years ago, um, it, uh, it ended up being, being something that we look at once a year, and, and not really follow up on, so, um, it, you know, if there's any changes or additions, I think now would be a good time, um, to either, um, table it for another meeting, or if everyone is happy with the current Board Operating Protocols, uh, you know, we can, uh, we can adopt them as is, but, um, we, we've done this annually for the last couple of years, I think.
I think, I think that there was talk of changing the, I, like, whether or not Board Members would get paid for, for meetings they did not attend, and I'm not sure if that goes in that document, or something else.
No, not this, this just kind of outlines, you know, how we, the expectations and how we operate and conduct ourselves in meetings and such.
I think it does mention the stipend being the only money you can accept, I think maybe that's.
Oh, is that what he's talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's towards the end of it, like, I was second. Saw it in there, so.
Is that what you're referring to, Matt?
No, just, just past discussions about how we were talking about, we would maybe change up how money is awarded to Board Members based off of attendance.
Oh, yeah, I think, uh, I, I interpret that as like our previous conversation. Stipends, district stipends, yeah, I think that would be another discussion.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, so yeah, if, if there's no, um, amendments to our Board Operating Protocol, uh, a motion to adopt it would, would be in order.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, to do that, to adopt those principles for the Board.
Okay, uh, motion by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, identify locations where agendas and amendments are posted, uh, it's been the schools, town offices. I think that's it.
The two offices?
Yeah, oh, and they are, they are posted there, and on the websites, yeah. So, schools.
There any need to mention anything about including them in our monthly emails? In this as well, even though we take them from the website, or does that not need to be mentioned?
No, because this is, we're putting this in here as our obligation to publicly post them.
Okay.
Um, so if we put, you know, some other places, and you have to do it.
Okay.
Alright, so I have, um, schools, town offices, and website, GRCSU, and, and central office. Someone care to make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
By George? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, firm choice of attorney, um, it's been Chris Leopold.
It's used still.
It has, this year. I'll, I'll move to affirm Chris Leopold is our attorney. Uh, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of affirming Chris Leopold is our attorney, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. And identify media sources, um, it's been the, uh, Lakes Region Free Press, uh, but they weren't completely virtual, digital, January first. And I'm not sure of that, you know, I, I've seen, I've seen the, but I'm not sure if, I don't know, I'm not sure if we want to expand on our media sources, or, but, just pointing that out, uh, there is a difference than, um, the paper that used to come in the mail.
But are the alternatives, like, do you pay Rutland Herald, or?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we want, you know, like, I still think it should still be the, um, the Lakes Region Free Press, because it goes there, we want, um, and, uh, but I don't know if there's, I'm just bringing that up in case someone has other ideas or alternatives.
Do you know the cost of the Rutland Herald?
Depends on the pose, just from the size.
Okay.
It is significant.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, people have been backing off of it over the years.
How do people receive the Lakes Region Free Press now, if it's all digital? Did they just, I'm sorry about like the people that don't have access to that, the people that we're still trying to reach?
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think there's another alternative, because, you know, like the Rutland Herald doesn't come out wells, I don't think those are all down. Uh, we could always, um, change this later, so, I mean, we can keep it Lakes Region Free Press, change this later, if folks are alright with that.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so, I'll, I'll move that we, um, keep Lakes Region Press as our media source. Further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously, authorize the administration to request and expend available grant funds from the Agency of Education, as well as state federal funds. Standard practice. Motion by Amanda to authorize. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mary, Matt?
Aye.
Aye, aye, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously, authorize the Board to borrow funds for Unified Union School District pending receipt of payments from State Education Fund.
You have that as well?
Amanda, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Along to authorize the Board Chair to sign Director's Orders and other documents on behalf of the Board as necessary. Motion by Amanda, thank you, uh, any discussion on, on number twelve? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Uh, and Committee Representatives, Facility Committee, um, would like to be on the Facility Committee, George. George, and anyone else?
Is there a reason it's only two representatives?
I don't know, like, if.
It's like, should it, could it be, I just wonder, like, so if there's two representatives, and, you know, one gets the flu, maybe, then you have one person there by themselves, potentially having to cancel a meeting, if you have three members, then there's always at least, hopefully, two people to attend, and more people, more conversation, more minds, maybe three would be would be better, I, I'm fine with two as well, I just didn't know if it was worth a discussion while we're doing it.
Right, um, and that's a good discussion, cuz I'm trying to think back when we created the committee, and I think it was, we should have a Facilities Committee, who wants to be on it? And that, that was it, I think it was just two people, and, and so, uh, but.
And I think it should include, like, I mean, I know we're kind of outlining Board People, but do we also include who else other than the Board that should be included in tonight's meeting as well, or is that a later conversation?
The principals are on, yeah.
Okay.
And Chris.
And Ern.
And Ern.
Okay.
Facilities man.
Okay.
So we have a lot of good minds there already.
Yeah, I'd be happy to be on it as well, again, for this year, and continue the work that George and I are doing with the, with the group.
Right, yeah. Okay, so George and Mary, um, I mean, any other interest in expanding it, or you guys think two is fine?
Anyone's welcome to come.
Okay, um, so, let's make that official, someone like to make a motion to the effect of our Facility Committee Representatives?
I'll move that George and Mary are Facility Committee reps.
Okay, motion by Meredith, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, okay, uh, Hiring Committee. So we have one person and one alternate. Would like to be on the Hiring Committee.
I'd be interested.
Okay. Alright, and then we have a spot for, for an alternate, so, I think.
I'd volunteer for that, because, like, retired, so if the interview's during the day, and Matt can't make it for any reason, I'm kinda local.
Okay.
If you like.
Alright. Alright, anyone else? Alright, I'll move that, uh, Matt be on the Hiring Committee with George as our alternate. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously.
Uh, can, before we move to SU Committees, can I suggest the formation of a Finance Committee?
Right.
Um, when I was first on the Board, we had a Finance Committee, and I was on it, and I think we could do a better job as a Board, kind of watching our money, and keeping an eye on it, and maybe every couple of months, bringing it back to the Board to review. So then, when it comes time for budgeting and preparing for annual meetings and such, we've already been on it all year, and I wonder if anyone's opposed to the formation of a Finance Committee?
Okay, yeah, um, so I think, well, what is it, is there anyone else here, I mean, I think we kind of, this kind of came up last year, too. If I remember correctly, uh, because it was on the, uh, the reorganization template.
I, I, I think last year, we didn't really have a statement of what the committee would accomplish, I think that's why we didn't do it, but this year, I would think if the, especially with changes coming in the state and everything, if, if the committee could work on just keeping a better eye on our finances, and have a better understanding of where we're saving, and what, you know, just what we're doing, I think, I don't think we do a very good job as a Board watching that, and I think it would be beneficial if we had a couple of people to really focus on it, and bring it back to the Board.
Would the administrators involved in that committee?
I, I would say invite them, absolutely, if they'd like to be involved, but I think if they cannot be, then we could still meet without them.
Well, I think, I think they would need to be involved.
I think it's, they would need to be, this is, it's a split line between governance and then school decisions, and I think, you know, the Board approves a, a budget, and then gives the authority to Carol and Corey to then expend those funds as they appropriately, and so I think, you know, as we're talking about finance, I think that's where Carol and Corey, at least, would have to be involved in that, and maybe Louis or myself.
Yeah.
Uh, as well, uh, cuz any discussion of finance, just understanding impact. Cuz I think what we just, you know, obviously, is we're looking at individual contracts, or individual expenditures, you know, if we're spending within our, like, say, our business, we have, say, a hundred thousand dollars in our, uh, you know, repairs line, Carol and Corey are working with, you know, Ernest on, you know, a five thousand dollar repair, that's, they have the authority to, to use that, the Board really is not, you know, overruling them, saying, no, uh, we need to go somewhere else, that, that's, we have to be very careful with, you know, the Board is, is, there's a governance, but not running the schools. So I think just understanding that within finance.
Yeah, right, I think, maybe my idea was more, I don't think we look into the warrants deep enough, I think a lot of times, we just motion to approve the warrants, okay, wait, what was, maybe I wanted to ask about line number seven, and I never did, or, you know, I just, I think we, we glance over things, and so, the formation of a committee would allow us to, I guess, just have a set of eyes, and, and maybe we don't have anything that we bring back to the Board and ask questions about, but at least we can say there's a group of people really watching what we're spending, and.
So you're more, more focused on not budget formulation, but budget execution?
I think, yeah, but I think, I think with that, it would help with budget formation, because we, as a Board, would have a better understanding of what we're doing, I just, I just think as a Board, we don't watch it well enough throughout the year, and then come budget time, we are staring, and I think there's months in the year that we could do a better job watching, and maybe a committee could help us.
And, and I just said, as I, I understand what you're saying, man, I just have to be careful about watching, cuz it, it seems like then, sometimes you're, you're not trusting, or, I'm wondering, because I think that's where that level of lower sight was, the Board approves a budget, and then, and that gives Carol, Corey, Ernest, the other employees the opportunity to spend within those funds, if at that certain point, we need to look at other opportunities for us to, say, reduce this budget, then that's where a finance committee could work with Carol, Corey to look at areas of reduction, but, I, I did, the warrants, you have every opportunity, every meeting, to ask questions, to, to, to do that, that, and you're right, there are some people who, who just gloss over it, um, but, if we, you know, Carol and Corey ever need to expend additional funds, ask them before the Board for approval, they can't spend outside their budget.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm sorry if my statement made it feel like, I, it's not a not trusting thing, I just, I just think that we could do a better job
Being informed.
Of being informed, and watching it, and, and I don't think it needs to be budget cuts that we look at, I think maybe it's, wow, you know, we've done a really good job working on X, Y, Z, maybe we should try to add this to our budget next year, or.
I feel like in the past, we've signed Board Orders, um, I used to come in at a school to do things like that, is that?
So, it's still Board Orders that you signed, yes.
Are you doing, chairs doing that, except, okay.
Mary?
I think we used to have more than one signature, we asked, yeah, three Board Members or something, I mean, it was, this was back when we were grown up, so.
Okay, yeah, so, the, um, when I came on Clarence Head, oh, well, I wanna go to Mary really quick before I, I talk about it, um, oh, you look, oh.
Yeah, just really quickly, um, so I emailed Chris and Louis this week, and said, hey, do you mind if I take a look at the control light, um, contract, and he really nicely said, sure, Mary, that would be something that you, that you could bring to the Board, and the Board would ask as a whole to check that out. Um, and so, would that be something you're kind of thinking of, Amanda, like of, cuz I do, I support your, your, uh, your ideas?
I would just think that the, the committee would be two or three people, but just keeps, and I, their job would be to watch the money better, whether that be incoming or outgoing, maybe that means we applied for a grant, we got a bunch of money, great, and we wanna, you know, acknowledge that, I just think it would be a couple sets of eyes, looking at the money better, that maybe every two or three months comes back to the Board and says, hey, we really haven't found anything that we need to talk about, we don't see any areas where we should try to add to the budget, we don't see any areas where we should try to adjust in the budget, everything's going really great, or maybe we come back and say, you know, the schools have really been spending a lot of money trying to maintain A, B, and C, maybe in our next budget, we should look at trying schools, so they don't have to try to pull from E, F, G, I, I just think we could do a better job to support everything as a whole.
I, I, I do think that in terms of, you know, just understanding a lot of the financial aspects of it, because, um, you know, it, there's a lot that goes into it, I mean, and, and over the years, um, there's things that I still don't understand when it comes to it, but, I do look at the, um, the warrants, um, and, you know, currently, the practice that has been, uh, since we got on the Board, uh, since the merger, um, you know, so every two weeks, the warrants come out, and at the time, um, Clarence would sign off on them, but anyone could go and review the warrants at any time, so, um, and so, within those warrants, or the invoices, and I would say, there's a lot you can learn about the finances just by doing that. So, in terms of this committee, if this committee is, um, something, you know, I, I think if the purpose is to, you know, understand the, the payment system, and, or more about the finances, and, um, and really understanding how money is paid out, I think that might be something worth doing, but, um, I think the whole, the budget concept is, um, is a whole nother
Yeah.
Another issue, but, you know, I do think that, you know, when we look at, like, our budget, and then when people come to our annual meeting and ask questions, and some people have some really technical questions that can't, can't answer, it's a little, yeah, it's a little bad, it's a bad look, so, um, but. Yeah, it's a little bad. It's a bad look, so, um, but, uh, so I don't know, uh, Mary?
Yeah, just really quickly, so. So in the finance committee realm of ideas, um, as a board, we would come to Chris say and just, you know, ask if we can check out the control light. Um, for example, uh. Like, you know, document because like I look at the warrants, I think we all do, um, but when I go back to. Kind of trying to understand where where and how and why the money was spent each month the way they did, I think. You know, maybe just. Having a better idea of that contractor, anything that we have questions about. Would we then maybe task the finance committee to dive deeper into that or?
Uh, I mean, you could ask them to bring back, you know, the questions, but I don't know, like. Um, I don't I don't think the finances are that complicated. You could probably just. Ask our business manager would be my thought, but I don't know.
Right, so I did I did that and, you know, obviously, like I said, Chris just said, sure, Mary, that's something that, you know, as a board as a whole, you can. You know, go ahead and um, and request.
Yeah, I think that's that might be a separate, a separate thing, you know, because.
Well, I I just. I I think a finance committee is a good idea, you know, and I so don't take that as not, I I think it's. About fiscal responsibility, I think that's part of, you know, board responsibilities, you know, because we look at a budget oversight, we're looking at. Uh, I think the the finance committee could work very closely with the facilities committee in terms of if you look at long term planning. Big projects you're looking at, okay, here's what I had, here's the the finances. Here, you know, so there's a lot of overlap between the two. You're looking at long term initiatives, impacts of programming. Uh, and Mary, in your situation, ye- yes, that could go to that committee and then the committee takes a look at a contract and says, we met with. You know, Cor- Carrie and. Or my God. Or Carol, sorry, um, you know, Louis, Chris, you know, and. We really look at, you know, we're spending a lot of money. Is there another way we, you know, another solution for us to really consider? Uh, so I think it's good. I think just, you know, just having that direction from the board in terms of here's what. It it we do because I said I've served on committees throughout the SU sometimes that don't get the proper direction and it really becomes a rogue. Operation and said a committee is just an extension of the board. That the board charges that committee with a task and then the the committee comes back with. Here's here's what we found and so that was my only concern, but I I think a finance committee would be fine because I think there are some. To be honest, I think Louis and I, well, I'll just speak for Louis, he's not here, but. I think there are a lot of conversations he would love to have in order to better understanding.
Yeah.
The the budget and why we do the things we do and why it's paid this way or built this way and just understand this. So as you're having conversations with. Tax taxpayers, community members, you can better, uh, you know, convey that information. Here's why we're we're doing what it is we're doing. And so. So I just wanted to say like I'm not I'm not opposed to this at all. I just think there's just a.
Yeah.
Just hopefully it's just a clear focus.
Yep, yeah, no, I agree. I I do think that there's.
I mean, could you come up with a proposal? Like exactly the size of the committee, when you would meet and what your. You know, what's your, what are your tasks?
I I think that would depend on who it first of all, if anyone's interested in the committee and then second. Who's on it and what they have for availability, but.
How about we do this? Is anyone opposed to a finance committee? Okay, so we could, for the sake of time. Table this for our next meeting and then have a a little bit further. Discussion and and folks can dig about, you know, because.
Well, that's where I'm trying to go. What exactly is it? It's hard to be for or against something if it's.
Yep.
You know, kind of undefined.
Yeah.
Yeah, any any look at finances, you know, another set of eyes is never unwelcome.
I mean, uh, monthly, I always have questions when it comes to the finances, so. And it's definitely worth worth looking into, so.
Just just one other comment about contracts and things like that is as a standalone, Will Springs. Doesn't have a lot of buying power. So if we need someone to to do our controls, um. We're lucky to get anyone to bid. Much less multiple bids to do that. Um, one thing that Chris has started and which I'm all for is trying to leverage Greater Rutland County in this regard. Where we're trying to buy in with the other schools, get somebody that does all the controls in all the schools. And we're we're not there yet, but that's where we'd like to be.
Correct. Does that sound clear to everyone? Picked this up in April? All right. All right, that sounds good. All right, and. We've got that. Uh, all right, uh, DRCSU subcommittees negotiation. Uh. So we have three represent rep representatives on there. Uh, we would like to stay on negotiations.
I'd like to continue.
Me too.
George, keep us on folks, I guess. Uh, anyone else want to serve?
Are you saying you'd like somebody else?
I I just want to make sure, you know, you know, we got, you know. Two folks online that, you know, just making sure everyone's heard, um. All right. So. Meredith, George. Myself, I guess.
That's why I asked.
Uh, I just, it's fine. You you never know, I mean, someone might be interested in negotiations. Then I would say. That, you know, we did just start teachers negotiations. So it's it's not like we're halfway through it, um, so. But, uh, okay, so, all right. So I'll move that Meredith, George and Eric are part of the negotiations committee. Uh, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carries unanimously. And then policy committee. Um, I'd like to stay on that. Uh, you know, I will say that policy is, uh. The policy review has been completed, as I stated. A few months back, so there's not a whole lot of work with policy. Uh, the next meeting is in May, so. Um, so but who else would like to be on policy committee?
Eric, I'd be interested in policy committee.
Okay. Um, anyone else? And then we do have an alternate spot on here.
I can be the alternate.
Okay. All right. Not hearing anyone else throwing their hat for policy? Okay, we'll need a motion for that as well.
I'll make that motion, Eric, and Mary, you have an alternate for policy.
All right. Amanda, all right. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. All right.
Did we do the? Trade rubber, you believe not?
Yeah, we did. We did. Uh, I wasn't sure, we weren't sure if you were on there, so it's Amanda, Meredith and myself. I wasn't sure if you still wanted to be on there.
I did.
I can step back if George is interested.
It's it's completely up to you.
I I'm fine. I stepped up because there was a seat. If there's not, then I can step back.
You're sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine. I attend publicly anyway, so I have to say I just don't vote.
Okay.
So it's fine.
So would you care to make a motion to reconsider?
I will make a motion to reconsider the DRC issue. Oh, it's on there.
Well, I was gonna say, where do we stand with alternates for that?
Alternates, basically if. If someone like if someone can't make it, we just reach out.
So anyone on the board can be an alternate. I we don't have to make that motion. We do.
No, oh, to, oh, I see what you're saying.
I think we have in the past. I don't know if we did most recently.
So Eric, it would be easiest for Christine because. Other boards were saying like if George can't make it, we know that Amanda is going to be there. We then open up the board resource folder to Amanda for that meeting. And it gets receives all the materials for that. If we. If it was kind of free flowing open, we wouldn't necessarily know. So it just makes it easier if we have an alternate.
So you should designate, you're saying we should designate it all.
It would be easiest, yes, for. On our end, yes. So.
I I'd be happy to be an alternate if.
Okay, so designate a unalternate. Okay. All right, what's that?
An alternate.
Yeah.
With. With the. With would then all four members have access to?
All the voting members would have access to it.
So then on days that there's an alternate needed, the alternate would be added still even as an assigned alternate?
So. Let's say on the eighteenth, uh, Eric, Meredith and and George will be in attendance. Um, they'll have access to the board materials because they are voting members of the board, so there's the executive session, they'll get those materials. Uh, you want to as a member of the public, you'd have access to the, you know, the public materials. But if, say, one of the three were not able to attend, we would then just notify Christine. Christine would then would give you access. To those materials and the executive session, whatever it may be, so you would get the board voting.
Okay.
Materials.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, and I think, um, you know, like in the past, we've, um. We've always just kind of left it open to someone who could fill a spot, but. If we're going to designate one alternate, that might be better, um. So, okay, so we'll, um. So like I said, I I think first we'll. Um. Take a motion to reconsider our vote for GRCU representatives. And you want to make that motion?
Sure, yes, I can make a motion to reconsider for Eric, Meredith and George. As the three consistent voting members and.
And then we'll do a separate, do a separate one.
Oh, okay.
All right, um. Okay. All right, uh, any further discussion on Amanda's motion to reconsider? Our GRC, DRCSU voting representatives? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries unanimously and then.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, I have a problem.
And then, you know, I'll I'll make a motion to designate Amanda as our DRCU alternate. All right, uh. All those in favor of appointing Amanda as our DRCU alternate, uh, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to our agenda. Um. A motion to approve the agenda?
Does that include the minutes?
We're just approving the agenda.
Right.
Oh, you mean the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm just talking about the whole agenda.
Yep.
You're making that motion?
Yes, sure.
Motion by Meredith to approve the agenda. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Should carry unanimously, general public comment. If there's anyone here tonight who wishes to speak. Raise your hand. Okay, general public comment tonight. And then we'll move on to new business. Um, a Vermont Rural School Community Alliance, um, as discussed at our last meeting, I did reach out. Uh, to the alliance and. I spoke with. Margaret McLean, who is here tonight, and in your packet you have their education, you have to make a platform, hopefully everyone's reviewed it. So, uh, welcome, Margaret, um.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I can give a brief overview. And then, um, you can ask any questions you want, if that's okay.
Yeah, could you say that again?
I can give you a brief overview, um, of the alliance and then. Any questions everyone has, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great.
Okay, my my name is Margaret McLean. I'm a community member from Peacham. And back in the fall, um. Myself and another group of folks from boards around the state, um. Found ourselves at the Commission for the Future of Public Education meetings, um, every month from July through December. And we, um, connected because we were virtually attending all those. Meetings and occasionally also going in person. And it became apparent that, um, something big was coming along. We just didn't quite know what it was. So in January, um, five of us, um, from five different boards. Um, talked to our boards about forming. An alliance and on January tenth or so, um. The boards voted and agreed to form the alliance. They were the towns of Craftsbury, Lincoln, Westminster, Marlborough. And Peacham, so kind of all over. Um. And then we, um. Found emails of school board members in towns with schools smaller than two hundred students enrollment. Um, and then a few that were over two hundred enrollment, but they were. K to twelve or pre K to twelve schools. Like Arlington. Um, and we sent out invitations to. All those school board members, um, from the five boards that had. Agreed to form the alliance. The the motivation behind the alliance is to ensure that rural communities, particularly, um. Rural communities that, um, have geographic issues, you know, um, long distances between them and the next nearest community or, um. That kind of issue, um, in the mountains, all those kinds of issues, rural issues that people might have. That their their concerns are heard in the state house. And we we wanted to make sure that, um, any changes that were being discussed. Um, that there would be specific testimony. From rural places and small communities, not just, um, testimony that. Talked about Vermont in general, but didn't really highlight any issues that rural places might have. Um, you we all know that, you know, something might work perfectly in Chittingen County, but it doesn't necessarily work perfectly. If you're like we are in the Northeast Kingdom or like you are, um, and we wanted just to make sure that voices were heard. We also feel strongly that local boards are assets and that, um, they cost very little. Um, and they add tremendous value to education in Vermont. And we didn't want the wholesale elimination of local boards because we feel local boards help. Make their communities' schools better. Um, yes, there's going to be issues. There's always going to be issues come along. Um, but local boards are right there on the ground and they have often children at the school, they have skin in the game. And they do their best to solve the issues. Um, and when governance is removed from the school, um. Who does that? So, um. We we now have, as of this week, eighty voting entities who are members. So it's been a bit of a whirlwind because. Um, since that letter went out on January fifteenth, we've had all kinds of contacts. Um, and we now have a steering committee of six folks who have stepped up to kind of lead. And we have members, one or more, uh, however many you want, representatives. Um, from the communities that are in a Google group. Um, and it's a communication tool for us. We've done a s- a press conference at the state house. We've been in various couple of TV, um, you know, segments about the alliance. A number of articles in newspapers. And we've hired a lobbyist, um. Who has given us good advice and we prepared for town meeting week with materials that people could or. Didn't have to use, but they could access and use if they wanted to. Um, and, um. We're ready to begin to give testimony next week. So of course, since we did all this or while we've done all. So of course, since we did all this, or while we've done all this, the governor's proposal has come out. And we've a platform which responds to the governor's proposal. And then we're also ready to respond to any other proposals that might come along. And it seems like quite a few are popping up here and there from various legislators or other groups. And we want to be clear what rural schools and rural boards and rural communities feel about some of these changes that are pretty dramatic and wholesale. So that's the alliance. We have Eric in the group right now, just so that he could see what it was like because you haven't discussed or voted, well, voted on this yet. And he's welcome, if you do vote, to stay in the group or to have somebody else or have a couple more people join him. So he can speak to the information he's received and if it's been kind of helpful. And we're, we, did I say that we have twenty-eight other towns that are exploring membership? So we have eighty voting entities and then twenty-eight other towns that are considering joining. So we know we'll have at least eighty and we may have as many of the hundred towns. They mostly, well, they go from the Canadian border down to Massachusetts and they are, quite a lot of them through the spine of the mountains. They are the most rural communities in the state. The Champlain Islands joined, that kind of thing. And this, I've been going to board meetings, this is my fifth one this week, telling people a little about it and answering questions where regular people like you and we just want to make sure rural communities have a voice. So, any questions?
Mary.
Hi, I was just wondering if you've been approached either by the Senate Education Committee or the House Education Committee to provide testimony?
Yeah, we'll be. We have contacted both the Speaker, the Governor's Chief of Staff, the heads of all, both Ways and Means and Senate Finance and both Education Committees. Our first testimony next week will be in House Education. And we, it won't just be the steering committee who would testify. And what we want to do is, we have this platform that we stand for, it's a little unclear in some areas because we want it to be a big tent. But as policy gets more specific, we may need to get more specific on our response to it. So we'll include the group in making those decisions. And we will gather expertise from amongst the communities, so if someone has specific expertise on a certain thing. For example, multi-age classrooms, there may be teachers who have a lot of experience with multi-age classrooms who might be willing to testify on that. So we're going to look for expertise around specific topics when they arise. School closures, for example, is one. We do have some folks in our group who've experienced school closures and would be willing to testify on that. So we will be doing that through the group as we move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just like to say thank you. I think it's really great that you guys have formed this and that you're able to step up and take all of this on and especially come to our meetings five and it's only Wednesday. I thank you for your time and dedication and I think this is really important and that's awesome.
Thank you. We think it's really important too. I mean, we're all volunteering. We think that some of these changes that are being talked about could change the shape of Vermont and what's so special about Vermont for many people and why they continue to want to live here and bring up families here. And we know that there are things that can be changed and improved and we know that the finance issue needs to be dealt with. But it's, we don't agree that it should be dealt with through closure of small schools or viable schools. And yes, there may be communities whose schools have pleaded with declining enrollment to the point where they're not viable. But we see that you can have thriving, wonderful schools with sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred students. And some arbitrary figure like closing all schools under a hundred and fifty students would wreck havoc throughout Vermont. So we feel it's really important, which is why we're doing this. Thank you.
Margaret, I have a quick question. George Gonda here. Are there any state legislators on, in your group?
They're not in this Rural School Alliance group, but we actually have two Google groups. We have the Group for the Alliance, which is the representatives from the voting entities who have joined. And then we have a general Google group that's got individuals, not necessarily board members, but individuals who are concerned about schools from all over the state. And in that group, there are some legislators who, you know, will ask questions and occasionally respond if somebody says something and whatnot. It's a pretty, it's about, it's got about a hundred and sixty people in it, so it's a pretty busy Google group. Particularly at certain times when things are going along. But the alliance group is more controlled than that. It's, you know, specific to the schools who have voted and the communities who have voted to join. And it's more sort of business-like, I think, related to what we're doing.
Do you see anybody in Montpelier on your side?
Yes, we do, actually. There are legislators who, you know, represent our communities. And one, for example, is Herb Olson, he's from Stotspur. And he created a bill called H one eighty, which was introduced in House Education but hasn't gone any further. And H one eighty provides a process for school closure that requires a vote of the town. And we feel quite strongly that communities need to be involved in school closures because there's issues to do with the buildings and there's issues to do with where the students are going to be going to school. And if those aren't taken care of with appropriate planning, you know, if school closures are rushed decisions. Last year Roxbury was closed, it was closed in April by the school board and in June, the school closed. And they didn't plan for the building and they didn't plan around bus rides. And now they have children on the bus two hours and twenty minutes a day. And the Montpelier buses don't go on dirt roads. I know that's, that's that's kind of unbelievable, but it's true. And so some parents are having to drive five or six miles to the bus stop. And then the kids are on the bus. To a, a long run in the morning or the afternoon of an hour and a half and then on the other end forty-five minutes. Depending on which part of town they dropped off. So, you know, that's a huge issue. There's a number of families in that town that no longer send their children to school. They homeschool because they don't want their little kids on the bus that long. And it's a K to twelve bus, so it's a, you know, it's a busy bus with a lot of older students on it. And putting your five-year-old on that kind of bus gives people pause for thought. So there's a lot of things there that could have been done differently to mitigate that outcome with proper planning. And Roxbury didn't have a vote. Montpelier dominated that board, Roxbury only had one member on that board and they were outvoted. So you know, they have an empty building that's going to cost them sixty thousand dollars a year to maintain. It's been empty for a year. They, with proper planning, if they still had school open this year and planned all this, then they wouldn't have needed, the building could have had other uses. They could have planned for other uses like childcare and preschool and other things going on in the building. So there's lots of issues when you have rapid school closures. And Herb Olson's bill addresses this. At this point, the House Education Committee is not taking up the bill. It was introduced, but it stopped there. We'll see where they go on school closure, but we will certainly push on that issue.
Could you talk about the membership, like other districts that have signed on?
Yeah.
The membership I've noticed is usually an individual with, you know, a district or, you know.
An individual with a town, right, with a school.
Yeah, with the school. So like, how does that membership work? So you have like one representative? You know, because I'm just trying to understand how, you know, like if, like it's a, it's a, the school board membership, right?
Well, yes, in some cases it's school board members. In other cases, it's a parent-teacher group has joined and has a member or a select board has joined and has a member. But in terms of the school districts, we are looking for members by town and you have two towns, so if you wanted to have two people. Because part of the role of being on this, in this group, is communication out to your community. So some of the things we'll send out, you might want to circulate to your board or you might want to circulate beyond the board to your community. For example, there may be action alerts where we say, write to your legislators, here's a form letter, you can change it any way you want, but make sure your legislators know what you think about this. So we might be doing some things like that. So being on that Google group is paying attention to all the messages and then thinking, who else do I need to share this with? Would it help us if we shared it more widely? That kind of thing. So you know, you're welcome, you've got two towns to have two people or you can have more people on there. We haven't gotten to the point where we've voted as a group about anything. We've tried to find consensus amongst the group. And I don't anticipate we will be voting, we might be polling what people think and trying to find where that consensus is by doing a poll, but I don't think we'll be voting as members.
Yeah, I was just trying to get an idea of like, you know, if you have these boards, you know, because you're doing this throughout this week and next week, where you have boards who are voting on joining the alliance. And I'm just trying to understand exactly, you know, what that entails in terms of, you know, advocating and stuff like that because obviously we only meet once a month. And then my other question was, is, you know, we're not that rural. And so, I mean, are there other similar school districts in Vermont? You know, I know, you know, I saw the map that was sent out and, you know, a lot of these schools that have signed on are like in the Northeast Kingdom and they're a lot more rural than we are. And so I'm just trying to picture, you know, what this would mean for Wells Springs.
Right, I'm not, there's different kinds of rurality and there's different kinds of sizes. So, for example, we do have some large towns. Some merged districts have joined, for example, Wyndham Southeast, which has the town of Brattleboro, which is really big, but then four small towns around it that work with Brattleboro in that merged district. They all joined. Because the people from Brattleboro feel very strongly that having those rural schools is really important. So Dumiston, Putney, Guilford, Vernon hasn't joined yet, but that's the other one for them. There is different kinds of rurality. And some places are closer to other places than than others. So the issues might be different. And in terms of you, I don't know what your how close some of the other places are and what your concerns would be. But if you retain local governance and you operate in a supervisory union, you have the ability to make decisions about your, your school. And if you lose local governance and it becomes regional or as big as the regions in the SCAR proposal, you lose all ability to make decisions about your school. So that seems like it would be a key issue for you. The governance piece. And, you know, you joined together as two towns under Act forty-six, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And you made this arrangement with each other because you complemented each other and neither of you had any intention of eliminating the other. You know, you work together. Other options you may have had under Act forty-six might have left you in a very different position from that. And as governance gets removed from local communities, that's, that's what can happen if it's not a supervisory union, if it is a supervisory district where proportional representation rules how board members, how many members you have and what voting capacity they have. So that's all something to think about and I think it's really important for all of our schools, regardless of if they're more geographically isolated than you or not. It may make you more vulnerable because you are closer to other places.
Any other questions? Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time. I will tell you that I am getting more, more contacts from southwest Dunvermont than we had earlier. I talked this week with the folks in it's southwest, right, it's Arlington, Sandgate, Shaftsbury, Woodford, Bennington, down there. So, you know, you won't be a little island necessarily if you choose to join. Hopefully there'll be others surround, you know, closer to you who will also be choosing to join. I guess the nearest members to you would be the people in Ludlow, Mount Holly, Mount Holly maybe. But I know you have Mill River in between. So you may know other places in your area who this would be a good idea for and if you want to put them on our radar, we'll certainly contact them too. But thank you, Eric, for reaching out and thank you for your time and I'll leave you guys to it and let me know tomorrow how, what you decide.
All right. Thank you, Margaret, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye. Discussion.
Is Medley one of the other schools that might be considering this?
I don't think so.
I don't think all of it.
Dandy, Timmies, Firenze, all of them.
All it, yeah, I thought that Medley just sent us something about.
That was, that was, that was about the educational transformation, not about this, so.
Not about specifically this, but about concerns. So what I'm saying is they would be ones I would consider letting her know about.
Yeah. And I think they have reached out. And I don't know if they're contacted, I would imagine they would have to do the same thing we did and that is have a meeting to.
Well, to kind of get rid of this, having a big information on Monday.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think I think the information she provided was.
Uh, you know, to answer my questions in regards to this, and I don't know how folks feel about joining the alliance, but. Um, yeah, I mean, we can, we can go around the room, um. Yep, so, uh, Matt?
Yeah, I like I like the idea of it. So I'm 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 okay with, I'm I'm for joining the alliance as a board.
Okay, uh, Mary?
Um, yeah, I'm just thinking, so their platform is very, very broad right now, um, which I guess is by design. Um, so. I'm sure those, that platform idea will evolve as things evolve. So as of right now, I I feel the same way as Matt. I I'm on board with joining the alliance, um. I was just wondering, like, if if the school board decides not to to today, would a individual school board member be allowed to? Join the rural alliance? I'm not sure if that's ever, or is that kind of out of?
I I think it would be, I think it would be a board thing. I don't think individually it's.
Well, that would be the other Google group that she spoke about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and and then also.
The platform doesn't say anything about like tuitioning, which I know is always on everyone's mind, especially for Middletown and Wells. Um, I've just seen like a couple local schools, Killington, Mount Holly, Ludlow, they've joined. Um, but nothing, you know, closer to home as of yet.
And I will say that, um, uh, you know, she did offer to put me in their their email list. And and I said, you know, for information, sure, and um, because I was concerned that. Not being a member of the alliance would, um, but i- in any of those um. Emails, we weren't included as members, so it did, there's a lot of information. They email a lot. And there's a lot of um, stuff just coming out every day. So, um, in regards to the alliance and what's going on in legislation, so it's very, very informative. Um, and then also, uh, uh, John Castle, who I think is, um. He testified, um, and I think the House and also Senate Ed. Um, and uh, you know, I thought I thought his testimony was um, um, really good. Yeah, I really liked what was being said, but uh, anyway, I'm getting off track. Amanda?
I think we should join as a board, and I think that there should be one person from one, one person from Middletown. And whoever's not on as a representing board member. I would encourage to join the other Google group as a parent.
Okay.
Well, there's no obligation, so I don't see why we wouldn't join. Wouldn't imagine that because we're part of this alliance that we'd be dealt differently. Should this Governor Scott's proposal come to fruition, um. You think Proctor would be considering joining this?
I don't know.
Because as part of Corey Valley.
Correct.
It'd be.
But Proctor Schools.
Very vulnerable.
Criteria, Margaret laid out. Think, uh, yeah. Well, they maybe organized tomorrow.
They do.
Uh, Sue?
I don't really see an issue with not. I think they got some information that's, I think could be valuable down the road. So, and we're not obligated to stay if we want to help.
That's right, no. But your input is definitely uh, well valued, uh, George?
Well, we might be riding their coattails, but if we want to stay viable, we need all the friends we can get. All the information we can get, so I think it's prudent to join.
Okay, alright, um, I think that uh, that kind of sums it up. So, um, you know, I'll I'll make a motion to that the Wells Springs Unified Unit School District. Join the Vermont Rural School Community Alliance. Uh, is is there any other discussion?
Do we have to assign our members tonight, or do we do that at a leader date?
Um, I'm already on the email list, um, and I, um, I do like, I do think that. Definitely, since we have two towns on there, someone from Middletown Springs would like to join on there. Um, I think it would be uh, an asset to what's going on.
Okay.
It's doing really good.
You're awesome.
You like emails?
Okay.
Said you were retired.
Is Mary just, I think she said okay.
Oh, okay, I thought she, I thought that was a, uh.
Yeah, we're sort of excited, okay.
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 Well. It it's fun.
And and um, and Mary, if you're interested in um, the the other uh, list that they have. Too, um, I'm I'm not sure, that's one thing I didn't think about asking her, and I can clarify. Is, you know, I I know that, you know, she said it's usually one person per town. But, you know, who's to say it can't be?
But I think that's because the rural co- the the alliance is actually making consensus consensus decisions. Whereas the other one is purely informational. I mean, there may be shared ideas, but nobody.
Okay.
Like, coming together as a group and doing something.
Okay, yeah.
Please, that that's the, that's what the impression I got.
Okay, makes sense.
What it sounded like.
Alright, um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh, moving on to consent agenda. Uh, I'll take a motion for all the consent agenda.
There was just one issue on the minutes that I saw.
Okay.
And it's on, and I maybe it doesn't really matter, uh, like the date for our annual meeting. Was incorrect. Which already happened, so like, just a. Right at the end, uh, says next meetings. Uh, February twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-five at MSES, but it was actually at Wells.
Okay.
Just, just in case anybody was to look back and go, next year's meeting is gonna be, yeah.
Yep, that's a good point, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, maybe I said MSES.
Well, yeah, maybe you did, but it should be corrected one way or the other.
Sounds good, um, alright, any any other questions on the consent agenda? Alright, who'd like to move the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, or what what the?
With the correct, with correction to the minutes.
Okay, motion by George. Uh, any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously, uh. Move on to finance. We have the month of reports in there, um. There's any questions for that? Great, on to, oh, Mary?
Hi, just really quickly, I was just wondering, um, with the Vermont State University, I just saw a couple line items. Um, I can imagine that was for some type of class with.
Which which warrant?
Oh, I'm sorry, um.
Not warrant, uh, which.
Let me try to find it now. Yep, so it's uh, warrant three eighty-six down at the second page.
We're we're on a month, the monthly.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, okay.
But you were talking about the uh, the warrant three eighty-six?
Yep, just at the bottom, I was just wondering, um, the Vermont State University, there's just four line items.
So, Mary, I do believe, and I can double check this with Louis, but as part of the teacher CBA. Uh, staff are allowed to take uh, professional development or professional learning courses. And I do believe that this is what this is, just the course that the UVM rates. So I think this reflects the staff members who are taking their professional development credits to Vermont State University.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, and then on to uh, reports, superintendent's report, um. Informational only, I'm sure if you wanna add any.
I I just have um, one thing to add, uh, so in the board resource folder, I dropped a. Budget communication survey draft, uh, for you to take a look at. Uh, it is the same draft that all local boards have been given, but I know that's uh. There may be a question or two you want to change or add, so uh, what I'd like is that the April board meeting, if the board is fine with that. Survey, uh, then I would then send it out on behalf of the board to kind of collect some feedback on communication efforts and. It's just something that uh, community could, so we could do a better job of, and this is outside of all the work that. The board has done with their email list, which is great, but this really is just my two websites, the, you know, the person we set out this year, so.
And this would go out to parents and staff?
Yes, yes, we'd also put like a QR code on the websites, uh, as well. We were, we're talking about how we could get that to community members.
Would it be something that you would want us to include after April as well? There's not a whole ton of people that aren't parents that you might not have, but.
Yes, I think that's something we talk about is how we could disseminate this, and I know that, uh, your email that goes out to. You reach a different audience than we do sometimes, so, cause I know, I do know that once, some individuals, Steve, you know, Chris, so a lot of times I just hit delete. And it goes like the spam, that's just the reality of it, so, but if it comes from Carol Corry or from you, then. Uh, it's a little better received, so therefore we look at how do we communicate information differently, so. It's just the reality of it, I understand that, so I'm not hurt by it, so.
It's because they have no photo.
Fair enough, so.
Thank you.
And it's another point for the photo. Yeah, so yeah, so I did just in April, I mean, if we just let me know or give feedback on that survey, we'll get that out, that is the final step. For the budget communication plan, and I know that Margaret talked in length, you've all talked in length, uh, there is a copy of the legislative report in here. Uh, there is a lot, uh, I know that the uh, crossover, I do believe for, uh, I'm going to go off memory, but I believe policy is. Uh, to of this Friday, fourteenth, and a lot of the finances the following Friday, so. Once these bills kind of cross over, we'll better stand in terms of where things are at, like there are still bills that are still in committee that's. You know, that may not make it out of committee, and others that will, so I think within the next week or two, I'll better stay, but uh, you know, I I would encourage the board. To, I know there's a VSBA uh, lunchtime webinar that you can still access. Uh, that uh, just to inform yourself on what's going on, there's just a lot of information, as Margaret has said earlier. Uh, it seems like every day there's something changing, a lot of proposals on the table about what re- you know, redistribution looks like, consolidation looks like, just different plans. Uh, so just the board just gotta stay in the loop, and if there are any questions, obviously feel free to reach out to myself, or, or to Louis, we'll do our best to. To answer any questions, but.
Get my lot of stuff out there.
Yes, and I did want to real quick say thank you to the uh, Middletown, Springs and Wells uh, community for. Uh, saying, you know, saying yes and passing our our budget this year, as well as congratulate Sue and enjoy going. Uh, successful reelection, so, so thank you.
Oh, and then the the new board member onboarding, I know, no one here is is brand new, but that might be something.
Sure, I can, we talk about that, so. Oh. We are, each year we take a look at new board, new board member orientation, what that looks like, how we can do a better job. And I think this year, what we like to, what I like to do, I've talked with the executive committee about this. Before next week's GRCSCU board meeting is uh, more of a year-long uh, orientation. That would not just be necessary for new board members, uh, existing board members could attend, but really around. Uh, different topics around governance, around budgeting, uh, just to, you know, something similar just about, you know. I know there's been questions about Robert's rules, how that works, uh, you know, just to, you know, uh, and so. What we would like to do is really kind of schedule this, I know that we're, once we uh, have a little firmer path. I would like to bring that back out to the, uh, in April for me is kind of share what that would look like in a tentative draft or schedule. Of that, but I think it's a better opportunity for us to continue, look at effective board governance, what that is, just better understand. Uh, roles, how it all works together within local, within the SU. Uh, as well as, I know that you're also with the district quality standards in there, cause a lot of work on, you know, with the states. Uh, but this also would uh, assist our local boards with meeting uh, that requirement around training and. Uh, or at least offering provided training for our board members, uh, so I don't worry if you want to talk about that, or a district quality standard. Not try putting on a spot, but I know that.
No, I mean, it does align with, um, you know, good government, uh, you know, district governing and and, you know, that's one thing that. Um, even with all this legislation is that, you know, the district governance standards are not, are not going away, they're still gonna be part of it, so. No matter what happens, um, you know, I think, um, in in regards to the the district quality standards. This really just helps boards, um, you know, u- understand roles and responsibilities and align with uh, those aspects of DQS, so. Um, yeah, uh, I I think, you know, I think it's a good idea because, you know, there's a lot, um, you know, and then. For new people and, you know, even those who've been around for a while, you know, never know. Might come up and learn something new, but um, I I do think that uh, this might be a good thing to pursue.
Sure, and a question was asked the other night around when we would see this, when this meeting would take place. We would look to piggyback off of a night where there's already existing meeting, maybe rotate, just not trying to add another night to someone's schedule. Cause I know people are busy, so if they're around a GRCSCU board meeting or around whatever local, it just kind of rotates each month. Um, you know, that way then somebody who's already attending me that night would just, you know, think, come maybe an hour earlier, forty-five minutes early, whatever it may be. Uh, would just, would have that, so, uh, just could, just kind of be respectful people's time and, uh, other demands they have in their lives, so.
Any questions? Uh, alright, so move on to principal's reports, and I think we have, we have a fast bridge update tonight, so. I don't know if um, if folks just had questions on the reports, I don't know if you had anything additional you wanted to add, and maybe we can. Um, just go to the questions and for on the principal reports and then go right into the press, that bridge, I don't know. Um, if uh, I meant to ask before the meeting started, we're gonna screen share the fast bridge stuff.
I don't think our, at least at Middletown, our K one data, I don't think meets the threshold of the number of students that allow to.
Okay, okay, um, alright, um, yeah, so.
Um, can I just ask, like, I I noticed on um, on Corey's uh, subbing rates. You included, which I thought really throw all of the actual numbers of fill rates. That as opposed to just the percentages, and it's, I imagine that's something that comes with it, if you could add that.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I think, uh, it really is astonishing. Is at times looking better than others. Yeah, but the number, you know, the percentages are just a little fuzzier than than the actual numbers really.
Oh, excellent.
Real, yeah, so, thank you.
Any other question? Uh, Mary?
Yeah, just really quick on that topic, I know we had um, talked earlier, Corey and Carol, that you had um, identified someone that you could. Utilize pretty much on a daily basis, either for Wells or Middletown, I was just wondering how that's going for subbing.
So, yeah, um, we were unfortunately notified by that person over February break and that they wanted to go back into the larger sub school. So, we no longer have that person specifically. So we no longer have that person specifically from Middletown.
Okay.
Uh, just to be able to be, to be able to choose the jobs that they're having are, are pretty direct.
And I think sometimes we had a lot of last minute.
We did.
Um, they had a lot of illness going around. And so sometimes it was a lot, a lot of last minute. So just when you're able to put your own positions, you can start planning out your meeting.
So I guess.
Assistant.
Okay. Fast break. The one time I didn't bring my, you know, so like hoping you could share.
Yeah. Um, do you want to use mine as a video chat?
Good.
So I, I, I'm not sure that you want us to go over it slide by slide. Um, I mean, the, the first set of slides, so the way it's set up, we have literacy first followed by math. Um, the first set of slides are, um, include the group growth report. Um, and so what that's looking at is it's looking at, um, they do show where students are performing fall compared to winter. So you have two graphs, um, the one on the left shows where students were performing in the fall versus the winter. And then the graph on the right shows, um, the growth. And so what we're looking for is we're, we're looking for students to be in that modest, which is the lighter pink to aggressive growth. Um, we are looking to minimize or eliminate the, um, students falling in flat growth. We want to see a hundred percent of our students making growth. So that is what the, the first half of those slides are showing. And then once you get to slide, um, once you get to slide fourteen and it gets into graphs, after that, you're looking at group screening report. So that's really where, where our students performing, we have, um, we have our two schools compared to the district. And so that is not looking at growth. That's just looking at where our students performing at this time. It does give you two numbers. It does give you the fall versus where students are, um, now in the winter. So you can see progress. Um, and so, you know, ideally we're looking for students to all be in that low risk. Um, and we are looking to minimize the students who are in high risk. Um, so you know what Carol and I did, we spent a bit of time going over this data and really we want to see growth, but we also want to see the number of students, um, in that low risk category increasing as well. So we've been kind of looking at, um, at both of those. Uh, a lot of, um, some of what we see when, when we see, um, we're looking at that growth and looking at the drop of students is sometimes we have very high performing students who have made no progress. Um, and so really starting to identify, um, you know, areas such as that. So what Carol and I did is we, um, we analyzed this data and we, we came up with some areas that we felt we saw some really promising growth. Um, we noticed that, um, at both Middletown and Wells, a hundred percent of our students in kindergarten and first grade were showing modest to aggressive growth in the early math assessment. Which is excellent. Um, we looked at Wells, um, who showed eighty-four percent of students made moderate to aggressive growth as measured by A reading. So that would be your students in second grade through sixth grade. Um, and that resulted in a decrease in the number of students who were in the high risk category and some risk category. And they saw an increase in the number of students in the low risk category. So some nice growth in their reading. Um, and then both schools showed a decrease in the number of students, um, who were at high risk and some risk. And an increase in the number of students who are at low risk on the A math assessment. So again, that is students in second grade through sixth grade. Um, we do have some areas that we are looking at, um, that we want to remain focused on while, so, um, the A, the A reading, there, there are a slew of assessments that students get. The A reading assessment is all computer-based for students in second grade through sixth grade. Um, the CBM reading, which is administered to, uh, first graders will be beginning in the, in the winter, um, and then second and third graders all year long. That the students are given, uh, three passages. They have to read, um, as much as they can in one minute. And we're looking at accuracy and fluency. So while we did see growth, um, it remains an area of concern for us that we would like to see an increase in the fluency and accuracy. And this, um, it, our observation is supported by an additional assessment, which is the auto reading assessment that's given to students in fourth grade through sixth grade. Just that the, their, the ability to decode and read fluently. Um, and then, um, looking at this assessment is not broken out, um, in this report because it's it, it's difficult to break it out in this report, but we dug into our math scores a little bit. Um, students have an additional assessment called the CDM math automaticity, which looks at their fact fluency. Um, and we have a couple of pockets that are doing well with that. Uh, and we have a lot of pockets that are, are not, that are struggling with their fact fluency. So we would really like to start diving into, uh, what is, what is working well for those classes where we did see, um, really great growth. Because if students, students who have their math facts, um, fluently are able to, um, compute more difficult problems with greater ease. So, um, so that just led us to our analysis. Um, so this year we had implemented, uh, PLC is structured around the book, Shifting the Balance, which looks at making small instructional shifts in literacy practice to be more in line with the, um, science of reading. And so we are looking to continue that work next year, continuing to engage our staff in PDSA cycles. So that's the, um, setting goals, um, making a, making a small change, looking at data and reflecting on it. Um.
Cory, could you just explain what PDSA is?
Yep. So the PDSA is Plan, Do, Study, Act. So what, what teachers do is they're, they're going to plan to make a change. Um, then they, the do is they implement that change into their classroom and they're collecting data. This, um, the study is there. They're going to, um, they're going to study the data that's coming into them. And then the act is what's, you know, what's next. So it creates this cycle where if, if what they're doing is working, they're going to continue it and expand upon it. And if it's not working, they're going to make a different shift. So it really requires, um, collaboration among our teachers. And we've been doing it as a building that way are, because every teacher is a singleton. That way they've, they've got a thinking partner. Um, continuing ongoing professional development, uh, for mathematics, uh, with the BLS program, um, teachers have been working really hard on that and, um, just continuing that. That's a big change that's going to come next year. Um, that we would like to continue the fact fluency development. Um, we've both implemented some structures in our school in different ways and really looking at what is working well and how can we expand that to all of our TPO buildings. And then, um, we would like to work together to develop a, it's a school-wide slash district-wide, um, initiative to support increasing that reading fluency and accuracy for all of our students.
Be fantastic. How long do you think something like that would take?
Which one?
Developing school-wide, district-wide initiative to support reading fluency and accuracy.
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking we would, we would look at tying it into our, um, continuous improvement plan and, um, and then implementing, I, I think that you would. I mean, we, we did see some, um, improvement in, in pockets with the work that we implemented with the fact fluency. Um, I know in my building, it was just one grade. Your building, it was more school-wide. Um.
How, how long ago were these administered?
I was in the month of February.
Oh.
Well, it's January, February. These are very recent scores. I think the window closed right before break.
So like the fact stuff that we've been listening about.
Yeah.
From this was already going on.
Yeah.
Uh, in, in, you know, when I look at the, the growth slides, uh, it, uh, what, what's, is there like a, a specific amount or a range of growth that, um, you typically try and, and aim for in students? Or is this just, just a measurement, you know? Um, I mean, in term, you know, you know.
So the program kind of sets it, what expected growth is, and it's, it's different by grade level and it's different by time of year. So you really have to kind of like dig really deep into the program to figure, you know, and, and the program looks at it like what's their growth per week. Um, so it's not an easy number to find.
Can you explain, um, it's kind of on multiple pages, but like page thirteen, for example. Um, so it's like fall, winter, fall, winter, fall, winter, fall, winter. So is that like twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
This is, yeah, correct for you.
The grocery report, so the college dedicate what it means.
This is all from, um, current twenty twenty-five testing. It's not previous years compared. Okay.
No.
Okay. That makes sense.
Um, and then, um, what's the, I mean, the significant growth or aggressive growth? Um, that, is that, um, is that just another measure of growth that is used? Um, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I, the way I see this is, you know, typically you probably like to see normal growth, but then there's those who have aggressive growth. And I'm just kind of wondering how does that, um, how does that factor in when we're reviewing this information?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to look, i- i- it's, it's hard because what it is, is because it's just measuring growth, right? You may have a student who is struggling in, you know, reading, for example, and that, that student has been working with the classroom teacher on universal intervention in the classroom. They are pulled out, um, with the interventionist and they're receiving layer two intervention for four to five times a week, right? So that student is maybe showing, you know, aggressive growth. They may still be performing under a grade level, but they're showing aggressive growth because of everything that they're getting. So then I, I think the number changes and I would really have to dig into Eric. I have not looked at, like I've, I've dug into it a little bit, but not to know, is it different by, you know, if it, if I'm looking at a kid who is, who is below grade level, does, does their measure for growth look different than a student who is high achieving? Um, so I think it all depends on where, where the kid falls on, um, where they're achieving.
All right. Yeah. Um, there's a lot of information here. Uh, and then like when it comes to group screening reports, you know, it talks about low risk, high risk, some risk. Um, is this just, you know, I, I look at this and I'm still trying to, this is, you know, I don't look at this stuff every like five, six months. And, and so I'm still trying to understand like, this is just used to identify students who are not, not meeting certain growth, right?
So if you're looking at the group screening report like this one?
Um.
Like page eighteen?
Uh, the first one on here is fifteen.
Yeah.
In one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause it shows from growth to, you know, the, the risk. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, what the significance of that is and that help, how does that help?
Yeah. So their, um, high risk, some risk, low risk is, um, measured by percentage where they're, where they're compared to their same age peers nationally. So they're given a percentage score based on how they performed and, um, and, and based on that percentage, they're considered high risk, some risk, low risk. Because it's a norm, a norm-based assessment.
Okay.
So, you know, they're comparing them to, to peers. Then we can compare them to peers in the school, to the district, and then nationally. And we look at the national data because we're way too small to, you know, we've got three kiddos in kindergarten, somebody is in the bottom. So.
Are these percentages based on the number of students enrolled or the number of students taking the test?
The number of students who have taken. That's actually a good question. Um, because we have students that don't take our tests. I think it is students who, I actually, I can probably tell you. It is. Okay. Okay.
These tests are not self-loveling, are they?
Um, I think to a small, do you mean like, does the test adjust based on how the student is doing it to an extent to this? Yeah.
Cause I'm, I'm, I'm just hearing the saying that the kids that are advanced aren't advancing or, which I would expect if there's an upper level of question.
Yeah.
They can answer.
Yeah. No, it, no, it, it does, it does adjust to an extent with, with the kids. Um, so students who are answering questions correctly, that the questions would, would get more difficult. It all depends. It's, it's the A reading and the A math assessments, um, which are the computer-based. There are other assessments, um, so like K one and the CDM reading that second and third grade do, those are all paper pencil tests with the teacher or done one-on-one with the teacher. Those are not adjusting. Um, you could go outside their grade level. If you had a high performing student, you could go outside their grade level with, um, with a reading passage, but, um, those materials are really intended to be grade level materials.
So with that information, correct me if I'm wrong, but with that, I would point out that in K one, a hundred percent of the students showed growth. With a paper and pencil. Eighty-four percent of the students, students showed growth on a screen. So potentially those percentages would be higher if they took the same test as K one for the paper and pencil. Is that a?
Well, okay. So when I say paper and pencil, I guess I'm, I'm slightly misleading, but, but you're not wrong in that it's, it is, it is, you know, like, you know, here's a piece of paper, read these numbers. Who made? Yes.
Yeah.
You know, certainly if you have students who do not do well with a screen.
Correct.
They're not going to perform as well.
Yeah. I just think it's interesting that literally a hundred percent of the students without a screen. Group. So I know that that's not up to us, that's up to the state, but something that I think we should continue to notice when we're looking at our growth. From second grade on, there's a little bit of a disadvantage with their testing. In my opinion.
Yeah.
And, and man, I think when we talk about VITCAP later on, I think that's one of the concerns, just the, the ways the test is conducted, uh, it's always, it's always, when they move to a computer-based testing, uh, it's, it's very difficult to replicate. We always to say like students who like when they're first learning how to add, you know, when you stack like two plus two, one on top of another, but then they get to a test and they're horizontal, side by side, it's have a very difficult time. Like they don't understand because it just, it looks completely different to them. And so it might skew the numbers a little bit that that student does know how to add and what two plus two is, but because of how it's laid out, they may have gotten it wrong. And I think that's, that we do find that happens with testing. That's, and that's why, one of the things we do try to work with our staff a lot on is how do we replicate some of these questions that are asked, but we also don't want kids on the computers all day long. Gee, and that's where that, that balance is, is when they move on to this, this, they're doing a reading, reading on a computer is much different than we're reading with a book in the hand. It's, it's very, it's, it can be challenging. I think that's, that's just the world we live in and have lived in for a while now with these high stakes tests that are kind of being placed out. So, uh, so.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. For the update. All right. And, uh, so when we want, then you, you chairman's report is a carryover that we talked about. Uh, and so we're going to move on to old business. Uh, so we're going to talk about district clerk stipend. Can you, from our conversation last time, so folks should still have, um, access to that information that was presented at our last meeting around our discussion for giving our district clerk a stipend. Find it. Uh, so it's open up for discussion.
Um, no, it doesn't matter. Uh, I, I, I wanted to, uh, take a bit of a clarification actually to Amanda's point about sending a chunk of money to the district or the town that's running the election. I think that was a concern of how that was, um, supposed to play out. And, um, I think the intention was that the clerk would have a stipend and then the town would be sent, uh, about to run the election. Um, that. As opposed to one large check going for the whole thing for them to do the, yeah. So it'd be like, just as our, our pressure was to stipend, the clerk would have a stipend. And then it would be actually there, I think potentially money for both. there, I think, potentially money for both communities to run the election, actually. Because you have see, uh, you have B C A members bringing varying ballots. And um that's how many hours was that? Three hours? Uh, roughly?
I know, won't buy so quick.
Yeah, but it's a half hour to travel up. Uh, it was it it was like two hours, I think. Um, running six hundred plus ballots.
Yeah.
And uh, and then your return trip. And you write it, et cetera.
Yeah.
So anyway. Uh, that was just, I know something that Amanda had brought up last time. But it it seemed kind of strange just sending a whole bunch of money to the community. In fact, two, two separate pieces, actually three, one, one for the non-host, one for the host community, and then one plus that for the clerk.
Yeah, and I think in regards to this discussion, just based off um our lengthy discussion. You know, this, this is just to talk about our district clerk, you know, and and not mix, you know, more than one um thing together. And so I I think um if uh, you know, we can come to some kind of consensus on um if and whether or not to provide a stipend, um you know, outside of the one that's provided for uh the annual meeting. That's on the the um, the stipend list from last month. Um. I think that'd be great. So um, I don't know if anyone has any suggestions or or input. So we can, we can just do this quickly and go around the room again. Uh. And uh, so. Who wants to go first? I'll pick someone. Look like you want to speak. See, you're working on something.
I want to hear everybody else's thoughts before I speak, so that I. Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah, sure. I'll go first. Just really, really quickly. I know when I was looking back, the stipend was a hundred, and I think I at least from Middletown, Patty requested a thousand. Is that, is that, do I have that correct?
It's it's in the, it's in the drive. I think it was hundred or something.
Okay, I'm just wondering like what what, why the big increase, but maybe we we had discussed this in previous meeting and I just wasn't remembering that.
It's it's a thousand and then a, yeah.
So can you just, if you have the request there? The request was a thousand for the clerk and then what for the towns?
Five hundred for the host town, two fifty for the non-host for election. What it was.
So seventeen fifty.
And and what do we pay right now, Eric? Sorry.
One hundred.
A hundred. So.
In in that, that one hundred is just for the district clerk to 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 offset the annual meeting, just like the moderator.
Right.
Um, I can, I can go.
Yes.
So uh, I I find that 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 amounts a lot considering, you know, how much we're trying to conserve and you know, our our bud, our our budget passed by what thirty but votes, thirty-plus votes. Um. So I'm a little cagey about spending too much money and and you know, this is something that's going to you know, continue in the near future until we pass a motion to change it. Um. So I would, I would go. I would start, I would start at, you know, and and I'm open to other others' opinions, but I would go three hundred total. You know, uh, maybe, uh, yeah, three hundred total or four hundred. Um. I'd cap it at that personally, but would love to hear other people in the room and what they think.
George? Would would the three hundred be for our uh? Would be, that be for Patty's?
Yeah, you know, I was, uh, as I was saying, I I adjusted it from three hundred to four hundred, so a hundred for the clerk and then a hundred for, you know, spread, spread the money around as as justly as we thought, but in terms of capping it, I I would cap it, I'd say four hundred. I feel this is, and we looked at this last board meeting, but this is something that other towns are not paying for, correct?
Correct.
And so it seems, seems like this is, I mean, it's a nice to do and I want to support our local towns, obviously, as a town member. Um. But I just also want to be cautious and careful of our budget because this is something that's going to be a hit every year.
Can I just, uh, I'm in a, I'm in a really awkward position here as an assistant clerk. Um. But I'm gonna try and just give a little bit broader understanding of what is involved time-wise. Uh, which is why she asked for the amount she did, and I totally understand, and I may recruit, recuse myself from even voting on this. Um, but there are a lot of hours spent um with her um uh managing, having to um test the ballot uh counter. Um, uh, it's there, uh, we run the, we test the ballots and they require B C A members to come in and they fill out um sample ballots that we run through to make sure the computer, uh, not the computer, the ballot counter cards are actually counting the ballots. Um. That takes a couple hours, um, including creating the ballot itself takes time. Um. And then, then there's the election. So I, this is just her part. Um, and granted uh, B C M A members and poll workers um are there anyways for another election, so I do see where um, you're not needing to pay them twice. And larger communities have more resources, so they're not even considering having to pay for the school election. Um. Uh, and then there's the the actual counting, which again is overseen by the clerk, but B C A members and poll workers um are are running. Um, so that's just like what goes into it. Um.
Is there a way to itemize all that, or is that just too difficult to do?
No, I think she did, actually. Well, I I don't know. I can't remember. That was.
Well, I mean, how how many people, how many hours?
Yeah.
What's their pay rate?
The pay rate is a minimum plus fifty cents, but I don't know currently if Wells is paying their poll workers. Um, not all communities do, um, but we do. Um.
I don't think they do.
Yeah. Uh, Wells uh hasn't historically. I don't know if they did this year or not.
They did not.
Um.
I'm sorry.
But that being said, um they also just would we had Nora as our clerk and she resigned right uh two months before the election. There's some information.
Amanda?
Uh, hey, sorry, uh. Meredith, I was just curious, um, in terms of creating the vote, the the voting card and those other various tasks, i- is Patty getting paid for that in any way? Or is that?
No.
Volunteer, volunteered.
Well. It's part of is she's a salaried worker. So um, I guess when she technically does it, I I don't, you know, it she probably, I I can't, I can't speak to exactly when she's doing it, but she's a salaried clerk for the town.
Okay, I'm just curious.
If she didn't have to run this election, she wouldn't have to do the work. She'd only be doing our town's election, which is a different set of cards.
I I see. I see.
We have, yeah, we have to test two sets of cards. They have to get two sets of cards. And I guess that I believe the um we're charged, I think our S U is charged for a set of cards, so she doesn't have to pay for them, but they have to be created and then they have to be brought and tested. Um, I was doing, I was part of the testing of the ballots and it was just another set of, but you know, fortunately, it was only one piece um this year, but you know, we had three, two other pages for the town.
Meredith, can you just tell us like how long it would potentially takes to test the ballot?
Um. It involved four plus her probably about an hour.
Four people.
For four people plus the clerk. So she's overseeing it and it's sort of administering the test. We fill out the ballots, then we uh, we ru- run them through, we tally the ballots, um, and there's, you know, some hand counting. We have to um, just reconcile that the machine did it properly, which is always the case. It's generally the people who make the mistakes.
It's the minimum wage plus.
That's the minimum wage plus fifty cents.
Fifty cents.
Yeah.
What's our minimum now?
Thirteen something, I think. I and and granted, that's part of you know, we were testing another set of ballots to the town ballots at the same time, but that's probably another hour, so.
Well, that's what I mean by itemized, like, how many people for how long, what salary, what percentage?
And that's what she did to get these figures.
But but when it comes out with thousand and five hundred and two fifty, that that looks very suspicious.
Well.
Not well thought out to me.
Minimums, yeah, I mean, that that would be, that would be double what school board members are allotted for the for the year. Am I right? Uh, yeah. Okay.
Double plus seven hundred and fifty.
Would um it could we have, we have previously talked about, actually at the request of the town clerks to consider another tabulator. Would a tabulator, another tabulator moves a needle?
No.
Okay.
Uh, we we discussed that quite a bit and um you s- you you can't bring that tabulator up, so the only I mean, maybe it would save.
Cause my thought is, is when when.
You wouldn't have this, well, okay, so currently we have to co-mangle all the ballots.
Yeah.
So it's all got to go through one tabulator.
Right. So.
So the extra tabulator doesn't do you any good.
So when, when um, when, since since the clerk is in Middletown, so when the voters come in, they would put their school ballot in the second tabulator, and then it would just stay there and then not be ran until the the ballots came from Wells, then everything get put in, so it's, it's less work. You don't have poll workers sitting there for an hour.
But you're not combing, well, I guess you would combing a little bit into that tabulator. I guess, I suppose, so you might save yourself.
A couple hours.
An hour. You're
Cause they got.
And now you're testing another, and I guess it's the same amount of testing. It's just on a different machine. Plus, you'd have to store the machine.
You have to store the machine. You have to.
I I really don't think at this level that the machine is going to save you money, and you're talking about six thousand dollars.
Well, that, I think we were, we were gonna wait to see if there might have been legislation. I mean, I wasn't considering, let's, let's spend thousands of dollars.
And and uh, again, I'll just say, those are numbers she gave us. That does not mean that we have to
Yeah.
pay that. Um, and like I said, I'll accuse myself of the vote entirely, but um.
Right, right.
I mean, to to Matt.
It's it, I it's just, I wanted to let you know that it's not the same as it's additional work. It's not the same as just running your town and that. So there you go.
But to Matt's point, I I think that's, and I'm not saying any, any of this is wrong. But again, those those rounded-off figures to me are hard to sell to our constituents. If we're gonna budget, put this in the budget every year, what's it based on? To Matt's point, like, we're.
That's what I just told you, what it was based on and um Patty's email originally, I think. You know, said that. I don't know if she wrote down the hours, but that's the numbers. She didn't just fuck them out of the air.
Well, I'd I'd like to see it. That's my point. I'd like to see my, everything itemized. So when we put, when we budget for this, this next year, that's what it's based on. And someone asked us, why, where did this line item come from? Well, it came from this estimate by the town clerk. That's where it came from.
Yeah, a thousand for the clerk as a stipend, and then five hundred for the, for the post-town, two fifty for the non-host. Um. But uh, you know, I I'll say, I think about um you know, the the concern around having, you know, a significant stipend. And I would say, you know, a thousand is a significant stipend and um you know, it's might set a, you know, might set a precedent, but then again, you know, I do appreciate the fact that we have a district clerk, number one, and um not anyone can just do it. So it is a specific um person. I mean, technically, anyone can do it, but um they would have to work with that town clerk anyway, so.
And a lot of town clerks wouldn't let you, wouldn't let someone else run. I'm not sure.
Right.
In their town office.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Probably none.
So it, for me, it's kind of tricky. I think in regards to stipends and you know, it's it's similar, um, you know, we we have stipends and but most of our, you know, our our contributions to the school and the towns in the district, it's not I mean, if we were looking to offset every, every hour of compensation that we spent throughout the year, it wouldn't be financially feasible. And so I kind of look at a stipend for our district clerk in the same way where I don't think, um, in my opinion, it should be um an amount that is going to equal time spent. You know, do an A and B. You know, I just think it's a stipend to offset um, some of the work. Um, and but it's not going to be equal to um, that amount of work, if if any of this makes sense. So, you know, I I'd kind of be in favor of of Matt's recommendation, maybe three to four hundred as a stipend just to the the town clerk and um you know, um, there's, I think there's a lot of towns out there that um you know, they rely on volunteers and and uh, but that's my opinion. Sue?
Um, it's not budgeted, and I have issues with just spending money, but not.
Oh, we're not adding to this, but this is for next year.
Okay, so she's got her hundred-dollar check. She's all set, so it's.
But if we missed putting this in the budget because we didn't speak about this the entire year last year, and we had plenty of time to do that.
Hmm. Then I would still have to wait till the point of no, I wouldn't do this, cause it's kind of a salary job. It's a job. She got a stipend already, what it is. And most people work on volunteers. Sorry, but I'm kind of beta volunteering, so.
I'll remind you. Nora resigned two months before our election.
There was a lot more behind us than that, but yeah, I didn't.
So we would have had maybe she if she hadn't stepped in, I don't know what we would have done.
I know, but um there was other stuff involved in that, too.
Uh, so I know, I know you have specifically, you know, you have kind of a conflict of interest, and that's fine. Um, I completely understand. So Amanda?
Um. I I have a lot of thoughts. I I do not think we should pay the host town or non-host town at all. I think that we as board members should step up to assist in the transporting of the ballots as the additional person.
They have to be B C A member, at least one of them.
Right, right, one person.
Yeah.
Right, and so and the other person is already there at the town. So to say we're gonna pay the host town five hundred dollars to ride from Middletown to Wells is kind of like a lot. Or vice versa.
No, no, no. The five hundred is for the host town. The they're putting on the election.
Right, but that'd be like we'd pay.
The other smaller amount was for the non-host town.
Right, but so that would mean this, if we did this, then that would mean this year, the person that rode with Eric to Middletown would get two hundred and fifty dollars for riding from Wells to Middletown.
No, the person doesn't. The town does because they orchestrated their end of the election. That's, that's what I was trying to say. Those monies go to the town. Not the person. The stipend goes to Patty or the clerk, whoever that is. And the others go to the towns, not people.
So I'm So I'm, I still feel like a thousand is a lot, I think seventeen fifty is out of reach. And I would say no more than five hundred to the clerk that matches the board members, now to whatever we decide. Tonight, we still needed to come back to all of these stipends, because even if we give the clerk five hundred dollars and say it's ten hours, right? We as board members are also getting five hundred dollars for a lot more than ten hours. So I think if we're talking about money and equal and what time people put into things, we need to look at everybody on the list of stipends, not just the clerk that puts in her time for stuff, so I think this, I think it's just, I think it's too much to go higher without having the money to adjust other things, so five hundred would be my max. I'd lean more towards three or four, I appreciate the insight, and I do agree that yes, Nora left. But I also think that one of our board goals is to be fiscally responsible, and it's not fiscally responsible to spend, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars on an election and an annual meeting.
Mary?
Yeah, just really quickly, I just wanted to clarify, Matt was saying, you know, between three to four hundred on a whole? Is that what you were saying, Matt? Or are we just talking just the district, or just the clerk, I'm sorry?
I mean, I was thinking if, if everybody needed to get paid, then we would distribute it from that, I did, I was just setting the max is what.
Okay.
If we decide that all of it goes to the clerk, that's on me too.
So, to, um, to Sue's point that, you know, this, none of this is budgeted, um, it, it just, you know, kind of struck me that if we're not gonna, um, you know, add this, or take this out of what's already budgeted, then maybe we should just, I hate to kick the can down the road, but maybe we should talk about it during budget time and not now. Um, you know, because at our last meeting, I did say I, I don't support taking it out of the budget that's already been, uh, approved and then now passed, so, um.
Sorry, go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, just really quickly, I would support that, Eric, um, I'm just thinking how to, you know, it had in to twenty-six, um, and just with reading and kind of trying to keep track of what the budget, or I'm sorry, the proposal from the governor, um, you know, even numbers came down to like a cap of three percent increase over last year, um, you know, would be, per- perhaps what we were looking at, so, um, and I know we, we had talked to, you know, previously that we were at around five this year, so, you know, any increase is gonna, um, we're gonna have to think about that, um, so, tha- that's what I would support, is waiting until budget time.
Okay.
I, I do understand your point, Eric, about not changing something that's already budgeted. And I, as much as I do agree with that, I also think it's important as a board and, our community to support what members we do have. So I would say whatever amount, if we agree on an amount, call it three hundred, then maybe she is entitled to that additional two hundred, for what she already did, right, like, then like a, like a back pay?
Well, we're throwing darts at the dartboard here. I'd like to see it itemized, I'd like to see this rolled into next year's budget, when we come up with the budget. That we've got a basis for an increase, we can sell to the public, because it's based on, information we got from the people who are doing the election for us. That's what I'd like to see, I'm not for any increase right now, because we don't know what the right increase is, we don't. And we don't have the money.
We have the person today, if we're saying no today, do we not have the person tomorrow?
I think, I, I think the fact that we're discussing this is appreciated, in my opinion, I don't know.
Yeah, for, for what it's worth, the numbers were, numbers that she came up with based on the hours, et cetera, that we've described, that I've described, um. They are just a place to start, so we would talk about this. Uh, there's no sort of like, I'm only doing it for this amount of money, there's nothing like that. And I think, um, I think it's a lot of money, so. I, I certainly am not advocating for it, but my concern is that this should have happened last year. We were asked about it last year, we were given this information last year in November, and we just dropped the ball. And I don't think that was right.
Yeah.
For someone who stepped in at the last minute and did the election. And, you know, a lot of it, and part of the reason was it was a very complex election.
Yeah.
It was not just our election and our town elections, there was a primary going on, a federal election, and it was a lot, it was extra work on top of extra work, not all of ours.
But the, but the other stuff wasn't our, our responsibility or our fault.
Correct, that's why I just said, if that extra work was already existing, and now to put this on top. And I'll mention, cause the one thing that hasn't been mentioned, is when our budgets go down, then we have to have another election that's completely freestanding, or maybe with a joint election of something else that happens to be going on. But it's, it's just another part we haven't considered, I don't know what to do with that.
Yeah, that, that's a whole nother discussion, let's.
But I'll tell you, larger communities, larger communities, communities can absorb it in a much easier way than a smaller community. Very little staff.
If we had it itemized ahead of time, we know exactly what we have to spend on, on a second election for the budget, right? Cause we know what it costs for the first one, yes, or no?
There was an email sent to Eric with, I, I don't know if it described the actual hours, I know that's what went in it to the numbers that she created. However, those are just a starting place.
And again, I'm, I'm just asking for it to be itemized, you know?
So what do you mean itemized, you mean?
How many, how many people, how many hours, if you're doing multiple ballots for different things, what percentage is ours? Is it half, is it twenty-five percent? I have no idea, I really don't.
I tried to.
Throw out a thousand dollars.
I tried to explain.
Flat thousand dollars doesn't strike you as unusual?
Okay, well, I think that's something that, um, if, if everyone agrees, we can have, um, you know, uh, maybe I can reach out to her and see if she can.
I would, I would formally request it to be broken down.
Um, and.
Myself.
See what she says, and then, um, I think from, from what I've heard, a lot of folks feel more comfortable to have this discussion during budget time, so we can actually budget for it.
Yeah.
Um, and, and you know, does anyone not agree with that?
I'd say a little before budget, so that we could give it to Louis before he comes with us with first draft, you know, like maybe, early fall or late fall time.
The sooner we get the information and know what to budget.
Cause they can sit prepared.
So maybe September?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it, cause.
I don't think we can wait till the budget, because then it's, well, we already have this and that line and that and this line, it needs to be before that.
No.
When setting it, just, I mean, that, that would be easy for Louis to put in, in advance. I think the one thing before we also to consider is just, what is that hourly rate, uh, how are you gonna break that down, so what, what do you lose? For your compensation, so that, that's the discussion, that's, that, those are the items like Louis can need.
And I would ask her, and then, you know, file it away till budget season, but get, get her, get that information specifically from her, sooner than later.
Yes.
She's already willing to take the, the position on with the hundred dollar stipend, so she's already doing this.
Yes. Yeah, you, you know, I, that's what I, that's what I was thinking while everything's still fresh.
Yeah.
In her mind, and just divide all that information. All right, so I think that'll be, that'll be the plan, we'll, we'll have it for September agenda, and, uh, we can have that discussion, and then that'll be some, and I know it's not significant, but I think at least be able to provide, something additional or some changes to the budget from that, at time, and, um, and who knows, like Mary said, our budget, you know, depending on how legislation goes, that could impact.
I would still say that in September, it should be a whole stipend conversation, not just the clerk conversation. I still think that everything is, we looked at it at the same time, so we have one amount of money that we're dispersing between all of the lines.
Yeah. Right, all right. All right, then we're gonna move on, um, to, um, school consolidation. Um, we'll start with, kind of with that first, so I know, uh, we talked about, uh, last fall, that we were gonna table the school consolidation discussion till after the budget passed, which it did. And, um, so, but since then, obviously, there's talk of education transformation, so, uh, this is kind of a, a joint discussion on our next steps. Obviously, it doesn't make sense, in my opinion, to have any further consolidation discussions, given that there could be changes to, um, the, um, the whole education structure in Vermont. Um, you know, however likely it may seem, um, it's, it would just be hard just to, keep talking about consolidation, um, over the next few months, but, uh, but I don't know, that's just my opinion, and so that's why it's on the agenda, so we can discuss as a board what the next steps are.
Could it potentially help us during this to say that we are aware that there's changes to make and here's something we're looking at? Like when they talk about like the real alliance and stuff, like not to, not to make any changes right now, but to continue to look into it, so then, when they mention, two towns, one district, we can say like, we are looking into the option of maybe, K two and one and three, six and another, to show that we're willing to make a change and make an effort to better spend.
Why not make the change? Why not put our best foot forward?
I'm not saying we shouldn't.
Why not put our best foot forward, so that whatever does come down.
Right.
From Montpelier, we look a little more.
Because it'll be so disruptive to the communities.
As opposed to closing the schools?
To make the changes and then potentially have to close the school. Why would you go through that upheaval and then have the schools closed?
We'll be busting some kids, maybe we'll be getting them used to being bused. Maybe we'll give people an opportunity.
As well as our staff?
Maybe we'll, I think, I'll get back to that in a second. Maybe we'll be giving people better, an earlier opportunity to look elsewhere. Because if the whole school is closed, we're gonna have a lot of staff out of work. What I'd like to see is some kind of brainstorming session with our Wells Springs community, involving, all the stakeholders, what can we do now to make ourselves look more attractive to any group we're gonna be a part of? You know, having, having six kids in a class is not very attractive.
Right.
So if we can do, put our best foot forward and manage some of the change, while we still have that opportunity, I personally think that would be a way to go.
I think it shows that we're aware and attempting to make a change and, and willing to change. So then when the stake come, I don't know, I.
Could be staffer. Mary?
Yeah, just really quickly, I, I'm trying to go back in my mind and kind of remember like what the two towns said. I think there was more support for like a K through three and four, five and six school, um, and then obviously, everyone knows that if we were to close a school, we would need, um, the entire consensus of the board, and then a positive vote of the town, um, and Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, so if you were kind of like going with the community, and we were kind of, you know, the community was more on board with that kind of consolidation, we're still running two schools, well under a hundred kids each.
Yeah, that was my takeaway, similar from the, from the forums, was that folks still wanted to keep their schools.
We're not saving any money.
No, nothing. You just added busing, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, in theory, uh.
So I recall that option did give the savings, not a big one.
Not on a six million dollar budget.
It yielded the savings. And again, we're trying to look attractive and viable, that's what we're trying to do.
But the current plans that are being considered, really, it's all based on geography and population. It doesn't matter what's going on in the school currently, and all of the whole, the entire governance is going to change. We won't be here.
Is there any way to fight it, can we put our heads together and come up with something?
So I think.
Or do you wanna give up?
Do I wanna cause major upheaval in our communities when we don't know what's going to happen?
Major upheaval.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with Meredith on this one, I'll help to break out those.
Just look at what's happening to other communities that haven't, haven't tried this.
That have tried to keep their schools open?
Yeah.
What's happened?
They, they end up closing, or they're closing schools and they end up reopening. You've got people, neighbors and families fighting each other over this, it's really, look into it. There's a lot of really negative social consequences. For something that is going to potentially be completely out of our hands anyways.
That's my point.
So, I, I, I don't know that that's, so not something I'm interested in.
Okay, that's clear.
Yeah, so in, in terms of, of consolidation, um, you don't think doing anything, furthering our discussions, uh, on that forefront would be worth it?
To my opinion, I don't think, I think you're rushing it a little bit too fast, give them a little bit more information, what?
With the legislature?
Yeah, just a little bit more would be nice, cause it seems a little chaotic at this point. I mean, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I, I know, I, so, I, I've been following a lot of the legislation closely, and, um, there's, there's stuff moving so fast, um, it, it's hard to keep up with, with everything, um, and so, there's, there's different governance proposals out there, it's not just, uh, you know, H four fifty-four, um, and, it, you know, and then whatever's done in, in the House has to go to the Senate, um, so I just, you know.
I believe they call the timeline ambitious.
Yeah, it's, I don't, there's, there's, there's a lot of information out there, so there's a lot of, of news articles and, anyway, I, that's, that's why I started off, I, I mean, I, I find it, as, as much as we put a tremendous amount of effort, into consolidation over the last two years almost, um, and, um, and honestly, I really hated the table back in, um, in the, in the fall, you know, for the sake of the budget, but, um, you know, it, uh, I, I just think that, we don't know what's gonna happen with the outcome of this legislative session, and, you know, if, if the governor plan does take effect, um, it, you know, I've thought about what happens, like, can we do anything? Um, so that way, if this new governance structure is in place, would that still benefit? And every time you, I listen to, uh, House Ed, and even, um, the Chair of the House Ed Committee, to talk about, um, uh, if you, if you bring up school closures, they say, well, we're not closing schools, it would be up to that district. Um, it, I don't know, they, they must think that we're dumb or something, because that district of, in the case of a five district model of twelve thousand plus students, they would take one look at our structure and say, what's the point? Um, in my opinion, uh, and so I, I find it really hard to, to, even if we change our structure, um, even if we try to close a school, would it move the needle? Probably not, um, so, it's, I don't know, it's, to me, it's just kind of like hurry up and wait, um, and it's a little frustrating, just given the amount of time we talked about consolidation, and, um, but I don't think it would, um, benefit us or, um the towns to to make any decisions right away. Um, and, you know, I think maybe in a couple more months or maybe one more month. I don't know. We know where the legislation is gonna go.
Or we're gonna be a whole other year because quite honestly, the timeline is too fast.
Yeah.
I I I think at the end of this legislative session, we'll have a better standing because the there will need to be some moves that need to be made. I think there are individuals Montpelier who are worried about losing their seats, so they are, they need to have something. So we may see minimum class sizes come come out to this session, which you've heard you say in the report around fifteen to one uh from an elementary school, which would impact Wells and Middletown, even if we combined, some of our grade bands would not meet that threshold. And what does that mean for us? And and I think it and I know that you you hear them talk a lot about is regional high schools, central, essentially located middle schools and elementary schools are kind of seen differently, but when you look at class sizes, you know, excited that's something we're going to enact, you know, on the uh, you know, July one, twenty twenty-six, uh, is there will be some adjustments in me paid me paid. I know that I was telling that, you know, up uh up north or in central Ripton, uh, they have a class size, middle class out of ten, and so they had to tell their kindergarten families, I'm sorry, we're not gonna be offering kindergarten next year as a result of this. I mean, there, so there'll be some decisions that will be made. I think people understand consolidation is going to occur in some way, shape or form. We don't know what that's going to look like. We don't know what is going to happen or what. And I think that's the the hardest part for all of us. And I say this, you know, from a the the square is, and if, you know, you said on the largest webinar, it's all about the foundation for it. In order for that to be really be ruled out or to be enacted, they need to first understand how the state's going to be divided. What that's gonna look like, how many SUs or STs we're going to have. And so I I think that's where they're wrestling with these these different configurations. And it seems like every day someone has provided a new map about what, you know, here's what we we think would work. Here around counties or around tech centers or a variety of other things. And and people are trying to wrestle with what that looks like. And it very well could be that July one, twenty twenty-seven, that you know, that, you know, I'm out of a, you know, out of a position and this this board is no longer in existence. But Middletown and Wells are still in existence under this new structure while they figure out what they're going to do with Middletown Wells and they start saying, well, we can, you know, Middletown Wells, let us we, we can combine the three of them, you know, and start one more school together. They can make those decisions in this large governance structure. Yeah, I think so that that's, there are a lot of discussions. And I think I I said, once again, I think we're over oversimplifying and overly complex issue. Because I think that's what we we said is, yeah, it is ambitious timeline. Because there there are a lot of things to consider around contracts, uh, you know, building. I know Margaret even said that, you know, close out a school, the the town is responsible for upkeep of that. And so even if they would close down Middletown Wells, worst case scenario, and, you know, Middletown Wells are still responsible for the upkeep of these buildings and and maintaining those buildings. And so there's still a cost. So uh so there's just a lot that we have to be aware of and uh and and have conversations around. So it's just, you know, um, but as you said, it's, we wrestle with it every day. We're on calls every day. So what does this mean? They got, they'll tell you right now what I think it means at eight thirty-seven and then nine thirty-seven. I'll tell you something different because something could change. I mean, that's just where we're at right now.
Uh, like, who's who's read H four fifty-four yet? So it, I have, and it's it's stupid because it talks about elementary schools. For it, you know, it's for class sizes, you know, K through three and then four through six, you know, one to twenty-five. And it's stupid because and later on, and then it says elementary schools K through six. So um they're doing this intentionally because they know schools like this won't be able to make those minimum class sizes. And and and, you know, um, if you look at the timeline for so if they pass this law this year, the timeline is by uh January fifteenth, you have to appoint representatives to form a forming board, right? Uh, this forming uh board takes effect and they start preparing operations. Then in the general election in twenty-six, the 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 members who are running for election for the actual district, then within, I think, thirty days, they pass over everything. So this forming district by January of twenty-seven, they'll be in place. I think there's time to make decisions about the school before they actually take full operation in July first of twenty twenty-seven. Could be wrong, but that's how I read it. So.
Well, yeah, because they're planning the students
Yeah.
being there in fall of twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, so there's good possibility that, given that timeline, they can make, they can make decisions as a board because they're now they're elected. The forming board is pretty much dissolved now that they have been elected and taken over. So I don't know. I just, I see that um they're they're leaving it open, you know, for this district to do what they need to do. And where does that leave room for schools? I mean, does that mean that they're going to um make changes before July one twenty-seven for the next school year? I I don't know. Um, it, I don't know, it's it's uh, and it also says that um.
I think it says that the the students will know where they're going to school by
Yeah.
the fall of twenty twenty, so they will be at their, so to me, that sounds like there will be schools open and schools closed.
That's what I want to, you know.
In your opinion, where do you think our students would go? Rutland, Fairhaven? I mean, these are things that we we don't know, right? And and like Chris said, at eight thirty-seven, it could be completely different at nine thirty-seven. So I I'm not saying we have to make a decision right now today, but if we keep waiting for an answer, it's fluid. We're never gonna have that. So at some point, we have to decide if we're done waiting or if we're just gonna sit here and keep talking about maybes.
But we're we're not dealing with absolutes, Amanda. That that's a problem. I think that's, there's a lot of gray right now. And I understand that this is the I think the anxiety that everyone feels, you know, is the fact that there's this is kind of rolled out with no clear cut plan. And then all these other ones, I I think our legislators, like, it was kind of like, here we go. And then they're like, figure it out. Like, well, how are we gonna figure this out? And there's gonna be scrambling trying to figure this out. And what's happening is, and I'll say from a staffing perspective, we're seeing personnel who are looking to flee, go to other districts because security or families are looking to move out uh because they're concerned about se- security. And it's destabilizing a lot of our school systems, a lot of our communities. And I think that that's where it's, it's unfair to the the kids. I'm not worried about July one twenty-seven. Oh, no, that's fine. I'll figure something else out. I worry about the kids. I mean, I really do. And I think, you know, what?
Sounds like you could be a board member. I I know, but I see they're going to need somebody almost with that kind of credentials. Serious in terms of the the level of education that a board member will need in in um, I'm not saying you.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Saying, you know, this is not, this is of course giving up all our local control, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
So this is what's happening nationally.
It makes you think people with that background will be running, be politicians.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And and I say this around consolidation where it it, and we don't know, even if the board, the communities that are only vote to say, hey, let's form one school in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, they can say, that's great, but yet that school is going to close down and now you're going to go here, you know, and it's large. It because you're, it's it's leaving up to a governance structure. We don't know. And I, that's what happens when you have metrics. And, you know, it it'd be involved in the, and because we know even at the high school and look at twenty-five to one, it it just that's not how it works. I I worked in a large suburban high schools, you know, you know, excellent middle size in this sort of Chicago, twenty-five hundred students. And we set a minimum threshold of eight for AP courses just because that was the number we have, which according to this metric, they would have closed it down and said, well, you don't have twenty-five. And so it it's not really quite understanding what this all, yeah, it's how, what it all looks like with the impact of this. And so I, you know, I I think we have to, you have these conversations. But I think also understand that consolidation, some way, shape or form will occur. That's that's the reality. Things are going to change. We don't know what that looks like. We can, you know, take a look at what, you know, redistricting, um rezoning, what whatever that may be. Um, but but we know that our governor is, uh, you know, is shift on the governance structure as well as you know, the super tenants. And those are the 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 first things because once he shifts that, then we, you know, create, you know, on that model, if he created five districts, he could create five districts, but there's a lot of other issues around CBAs and and teachers that just um, you know, I think our sort of staff would be excited if all of a sudden now they went to Rowland City CBA, you know, that that's it's much higher. And what does what does that do to local taxpayers? But I do know that in our legislative session or the legislative webinar, a question was posed to Representative Cornheiser around this new model, like, what would this do to the workforce? And she said, based on our special, that half of the workforce would be let go. And so the the question I ask is if this is really true about the quality of education is how many of those, uh, half, if we're looking at seniority, wherever the NEA or whatever list is, how many good teachers are we gonna lose to surrounding states, to somewhere else, because we've just locked them locked them off? Or are we going to reshuffle the deck and then just look to hire, you know, the 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 best educators in these new systems? They just don't have an answer. What's it going to look like? Because so there's a lot there. And as I said, it's like, you know, my daughter will be out of the system in three years, graduate high school. Part of me is kind of glad because I I don't, I'm a little scared with what's going to happen right now. I think there'll be, I look at PCBs. You know, they're out of funding and Wells and Middletown still haven't been tested yet. And also, we have one school who received a bill for air testing, fifty thousand dollars, and we, the state said, oh, yeah, we can't pay for anymore. Oh, so I mean, this is, and so like, are we on, responsible for this or, and so, you know, and uh, there's just a lot out there that, and that's my concern sometimes, just i- if we're going to, if we're going to do to do this, communities need to be involved and it has to be done right. Because we're still dealing with the impact of Act forty-six. So and it's much, I I might as is much larger and grander than Act forty-six.
All right, this is.
And just for the record, I never said close down either school. I never said that.
Right, but I, you know, so I think.
Is this a good time to bring up the email from Julie?
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
So uh in terms of the, you know, the legislation or the the education proposal and consolidation, uh, you know, part of the reason why it's on the agenda too is, you know, because we haven't had that discussion as a board. Um, and, you know, I think it might be uh good to at least come to some kind of, um, you know, agreement as a board on, I I don't know, um, maybe or maybe not, but my thought was, is, you know, where we stand as far as the legislation goes. Like I, like I said, I don't think it's I I think it's too much, too fast, you know, um, some of the components, you know, make sense, but there's just too many variables that um to iron out and and wanted legislative to that session. And then even just reading the bill, I think there's some spots that are just stupid, but that's just my opinion. Um, but, you know, I guess for those who who haven't read it all through, I don't know if um, if it would be fair to to ask for uh your opinion, but um, you know, I was just kind of hoping that, you know, as far as the future of the school goes, it's, it seems like everyone's in agreement that we like to see our schools stay open. Yes, no?
Yeah.
Not, Mary?
Yes, that's, yes. And I would just say really quickly that I know the next two months are kind of gonna fly by. Um, and April's gonna come really quickly. Um, and Seth, the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, um already came out with like a kind of like a counterproposal for the committee, you know, to look at. Um, and that was at the, on the V S B A, kind of like weekly legislative update. So uh, but like Chris said, I'm sure there's maps coming out every day. So.
And then I said, I forwarded everyone an email um that uh and I don't know if everyone had a chance to read it, but it was from uh Meadowwee School District. Um, and basically in regards to the legislation that is coming out, um and uh that um it was essentially to, you know, ask if um the possibility to ask the board to uh discuss the possibility of our board's meeting for an open discussion around current legislation and its potential impacts on our operating systems and ways that we might be able to work together. Um, and so, you know, what that means is um that um there might be shared interest between both districts that we could potentially come together on. Uh, for example, maybe uh providing testimony. Um, I know that um, you know, um, we're in completely different SUs, but if um, if that's something that the board is interested in, uh, we can see about. And I and I think the first step is just, and that is if the board is interested is having a meeting with Meadowwee and then just having that discussion. Who knows? Uh, we could meet and then just fully find that we're on opposite ends of the spectrum as far as interests. So um, but that was shared with me. And I will say that um, I I, the reason why this came into place is um, a few weeks ago, I did reach out to Julie. Um, just to have a chat with her, just to get her thoughts on what was going on with the education proposal. Um, and I didn't know it was gonna turn into this. Um, so and and I just wanted to reach out to, you know, someone else who is a chair and 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 um just to kind of have conversation, really, you know, something anyone can do. Uh, so I think that's where that really um, that that's where that came from. And uh, so there's, there's a good possibility that um, you know, I think, like in light of your suggestion too about brainstorming and, you know, like with what the SU might be doing um, with collaborating with other supervisory unions and uh getting together, I don't know. So.
I think we can have meetings. I think at this point, we can, as we can, together we can. And regardless of the supervisory union that they're in, they may have ideas that we haven't thought of and vice versa. I don't think a conversation is harmful.
Anyone else?
No, you're you're suggesting a meeting with the Meadowwees.
Yeah. That's what the invitation was.
Wow, you and I do not want to go back there.
Yeah, did you want to read?
Um, I'd like to.
Yeah.
But I don't think this is something.
That's okay.
Well, this isn't.
I don't know what happened. It sounds like.
This was part of Act, it was part of Act forty-six.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Matt, Mary, thoughts?
Yeah, I support um, I support that for sure. Just hearing from other people, I'm sure, you know, they're also following the same Senate Education Committee hearings and House Education Committee hearings and so.
I don't understand what the difference is with this and the world. I mean,
Are they a member?
They're not a member, they're not. And that they, I think that's something they ought to be considering and
Well, they might be.
Larger, um, you know, umbrella with um.
Yeah, I mean, they could, they could be. You know, to discuss it this week, I don't know.
Yeah, that that's why I brought it up when I, you know, I didn't, I forgot, I that this came as an email. I thought it was from our Google Drive.
Yeah, this is some separate, but um almost my turn to talk, um. So Mary, you said you're in favor. Matt, did you say anything?
Oh, yeah, I'm in favor.
Um, you know, I think.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying, you know, as much, we can, we can make these connections and and be stronger, you know, and and have maybe some advantages if we decide uh we're against some of these policies coming out or changes coming out and uh, yeah, just networking with these other.
Uh yeah, just networking with these other boards, I think is gonna be helpful.
Meredith, um what was your thoughts on?
Uh it's fine making a connection. I I don't. Uh I don't see a problem with it. I don't see a whole lot of value to it either, but um. I I think the Rural Alliance is um more organized in terms of, you know. Or a better direction to put more of our energy in because they're actually taking actions. And and you know, uh testifying.
Okay.
I mean, not that we couldn't do something in conjunction, but this is, you know, a much bigger group.
Okay.
But I I'm not against it. I'm making a connection.
Yeah, and at least hearing what they have to say as a board.
Yeah, and as I said, they're having a big meeting Monday for the whole iconic agreed. So then it's directly about what are we gonna do?
Okay. All right, Sue? Does anyone from the board remember you?
She's a flash. Sue Suklowski won't be there.
No, but I know some of the other people. Um. Just be super careful. To give in to them.
Okay.
It's a it's a it's a different board. But they follow a simple policy. It's not something that I think.
They they use uh uh policy governance.
They. I'm gonna just leave it that.
Oh.
I'll I'll be outvoted apparently, but I'm just, wow, guys, that was a good time.
Uh Jordan?
I don't know if both boards have to meet fully, maybe just. Pick a couple people to go talk to two of their people and like, what are you, what are you looking to do?
I don't like that idea at all.
Why not?
Trust me, you don't want to do that.
I could see having a.
I just want to know what they want to talk about first.
You want to talk to them, but don't send us to people. Send the group.
Yeah, um I think I think the invitation.
Talking two on two, not two people to their board. Boy, you must have had a great experience with that.
Well, hold on, hold on.
No, I did not.
Hold on, um.
Yeah, it's a little consumed by.
The invitation was was board to board, so. Um I think that in terms of meetings and meetings and meetings, yeah, I mean, it, you know, it might.
That's what I'd like to see. What do they want to talk about?
Yeah.
What's so.
I I think I, you know, I think because it was as a board, um you're gonna have. You're not gonna have one or two people basically acting on behalf of the board. Where now you have two full boards, which can come together and just have a full on conversation. And I think that's the whole point of it. Um, you know.
They want to talk about jointly testifying on legislation. That's what this email.
Yes, which is fine.
Yeah.
Coming together and do stuff like that, but isn't that the same thing that the alliance is doing?
Yeah.
So. Right, so that I have no problems with that.
Maybe maybe in our meeting, we just suggest the alliance or maybe we.
You can send them a letter or an email doing that.
I think.
I I don't see this meeting being productive myself.
Unless there's the potential that if we end up in those five regions.
Oh, they may be.
Instead of us, their school's bigger.
They may be looking.
And maybe now they do want us to join together and make room for all of our kids.
Well, I will find out. That that that's a whole nother thing. And that that really has nothing to do with that.
No, I I don't see this being productive, honestly.
I I think it's worth a conversation. I I know the past is the past. I know what happened in the past. I was in Meadowwee then. But I.
You know, you gotta you gotta pick a point and move forward though. But I don't see this meeting really being productive.
Yeah.
Uh I would say it could be productive, particularly. If they're for some reason not thinking about joining the Rural Alliance. Understanding that would be important or talking to them about why not?
And send them an email and ask them, you know, we don't need all all board members there to ask that question.
Well, like I said, we could have a virtual.
Well, they can't, they would have to meet in order to respond. Like as a board, so if one person, myself or the superintendent reached out, asked questions.
So from the board?
It would, yeah, it would be, you know, it would. I I the reason why it's both boards meeting together is because. You can't, you can't have one person really just advocating for the whole board because the conversation. Really could go many different ways. And so in order to ensure all voices are heard, that's that's why the invitation for both boards. Are we not gonna say something?
No.
Okay, I'm sure you're gonna say something.
We also don't have to attend if the meeting's planned. If somebody on the board doesn't attend, they don't attend. Scheduling the meeting doesn't have any negative effect by immediately scheduling. If people choose to attend, awesome. If they choose not to, that's awesome too.
It's crucial.
And Eric, does it make sure we warn that as a?
Yeah.
As a like a special meeting.
Correct. There had to be an an agenda set. And I think that's what the board does and members of public.
Well, I think I think the law states that if, and this is where um we have to reach out, but. If we're joining their meeting.
Uh if you're if you're in a court, I've I've been doing this the past couple of weeks, we're talking about community forums and it. So even if it's their meeting, because this is when Cory Valley was. Hopefully trying to rush this together, they didn't quite understand that's. Even though Cory Valley would host, if Wells Spring War were there, they would have to, and you're there as a quorum discussing matters of public concern. You would have to then warn that as a a meeting.
Okay.
Rutland City, if they were there. And so that's why we we they decided to. Postpone that because they weren't ready for that level of depth.
I mean, we could we could warn it, but I think, you know, before before that even happens, I think. We need to come to some sort of decision on if we even want to do it. Um so um I I think there's, I don't think it's. Um unanimous, that's for sure. Um so, which is fine. If you don't agree with it, that's fine. Um, you know, um and so.
I'll make a motion to respond to there, you know, and accept the invitation. Schedule that as a special meeting. I've requested it at six o'clock or later, and I don't think it needs to be a big agenda. Just hear them out.
Okay.
Who's on that board now?
Uh. Julie Mark?
Corey Rail, I think.
I don't I don't know. But.
I'll second that motion, by the way.
Thanks.
But you can meet him in person if you want. Okay, uh.
No, because I know I I know Julie. So I know. He was on Polit.
Oh, yeah.
And I know who they are.
Okay, okay, so Amanda made a motion um to basically agree to a meeting. Joint meeting with Meadowwee School Board. Uh any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Actually, we're just gonna do a roll call on this. Um just because I. Uh Matt?
In favor.
Okay, uh Mary?
Uh really quickly, so is the Meadowwee School District, do they fall under the Rutland County? So they have the same um. The same representative representatives as we would, correct, Erin?
Uh they're in Polit, so they have the same representative.
Okay, because they specifically.
Rupert.
Yeah. Yeah. Rupert's part of their Polit, West Polit, Rupert.
Oh, for Meadowwee School District?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I thought they all had the same representative.
No.
Okay, but all right, so.
Mine is all chucked. They're messy.
Okay, so. Mary?
Yeah, yes, I'm in favor.
You're in favor, okay. Um Amanda?
Yes.
Meredith?
Sure.
Uh Sue?
Not a voting member, but I would say no.
Oh, that's right.
I could swear in. I'll vote no for you.
All right, um.
Well, welcome to the group. I get out for a long time, so it's okay.
I'm fine with.
All right, the yeses have it, the motion carries. Um. So I guess the next step would be um. That um, you know, myself, probably with the superintendent, reach out. To both their chair and superintendent would be my thought, so I don't know.
I think you're the judge of the schedule meeting because it's two boards.
It's just.
Randy and I need to be there, then we can be there as well, so.
Okay, all right, all right, so I'll reach out to her.
And it's just up to you and Julie if you would like superintendent say, but if just what the board chairs, boards discuss.
Okay.
That's up to the chairs because this is the boards are scheduling this meeting, so.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. So any other uh discussion on um consolidation or education proposal? I think we. You got pretty good, okay.
So is consolidation going on like the May agenda for a deeper conversation if we're waiting a couple couple months?
Uh I I I'd be honest, I think we should just each month, just I think really, you you can't really. Schedule it because we don't know what's going to happen between now and the next four weeks. I think it really should be. You just a standing item, whether it be through superintendent for it or just. Care report to someone else that we continue to just monitor what's going on with these transformation proposals.
Yeah. I was gonna say that, just wait for the legislation to unfold, really. Okay, um general public comments, um you don't have an executive session. Uh is there anyone tonight who wants to speak? Okay, not seeing any hands. And so we'll move on to our future meeting, April ninth. At Wells and. There's no future agenda items to put on the agenda. Um I think the motion to adjourn at nine oh six.
Can you put the Finance Committee on there and I will come prepared with. Something to discuss in April?
Yeah, I already have that written now.
Okay.
But yes, finance.
We will have a facilities meeting prior to that.
Okay. All right.
Do we do we need to mention the league or say that?
Let's take care of it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, okay, um. So I'll move to adjourn at nine oh six. All those in favors, see if they.
Ayes.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.